I will call the June Planning Commission meeting to order. I will call on Commissioner Vice Chair, Director for the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we ask for your guiding hand to lead us in our deliberations this afternoon as we make decisions that impact our great city. We also ask for your blessings on our first responders and our armed service members who may be in harm's way. We ask for you to care for those that we love but see no longer. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Wyman, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore?
Here.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Here.
Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Commissioner Goodman?
Here.
Commissioner Hicks?
Commissioner Staler?
Here.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Here.
And Chairman Singleton?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. Are there any corrections in the minutes from the May meeting? They withstand as was presented. We have one item on our agenda today which is not a public hearing. It was a family transfer. And the first family transfer is subdivision plat FTR 2021-00010. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. This is a family transfer subdivision plat FTR 2021-00010 submitted by Peggy Byram, applicant and property owner requesting a family transfer subdivision pursuant to Section 31-514 of the Unified Development Ordinance. The affected property is identified as zoning map 61, parcel 40C, Whaleyville Voting Borough, zoned A Agricultural Zoning District. The city's 2035 Comprehensive Plan identifies this property as being located within the rural agricultural use district. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution approving a family transfer subdivision on property located at 7161 Corinth Chapel Road, FTR 2021-00010. Staff Planner Brittany Collier will present staff's report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this family transfer was submitted by Peggy Byram, applicant and property owner, to request to recreate one new parcel for her son Hunter Byram. The subject property is located within the Rural Agricultural Use District and is designated as designated by the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. This family transfer... Ms. Byram owns the subject parcel depicted above, which is located at 7167 Corinth Chapel Road and is currently comprised of 34.85 acres. The proposed parcel for Ms. Byram's son will be 17.66 acres in size, which is depicted in yellow, while Ms. Byram would retain 17.19 acres as the residue parcel. The surrounding area is zoned agricultural, which consists of single-family dwellings, fields, and forested lands. James Byram and Peggy Byram received the subject parcel in 1990. Mr. Byram passed away granting sole ownership to Peggy Byram. The grantee Hunter Byram has not previously received a family transfer parcel thereby making them eligible for this request. The lot dimensions and building setback lines for the proposed new lots are consistent with the underlying agricultural zoning district and each parcel fronts... I'm sorry. And each parcel fronts along a... I'm so sorry. The proposed new parcel has a 50-foot ingress/egress easement providing access from Corinth Chapel Road. Additionally, there is adequate area on the parcels for a separate dwelling and drain field. A deed of gift for each grantee has been prepared in conjunction with the plat, which prohibits the transfer of the property within 10 years of its receipt except in conformity with Section 31-514, subsection B3 of the UDO. Lastly, all parties have completed a sworn affidavit acknowledging that the purpose of this family transfer is to provide separate places of residence for the grantees and to keep the family estate within the immediate family. In summary, this request meets the criteria for a family transfer subdivision. Therefore, staff recommends approval of FTR 2021-010. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. Are there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this request? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none. Commissioners? Comments? All motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move for approval of FTR 2021-00010.
Commissioner Creekmore? May I hear a second?
Second.
Who is that?
Commissioner Goodman.
Commissioner Goodman, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Can we do this without a voice vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? Okay. This has no more action for City Council and it's been approved for this body. We have, ooh, 12 items on our public hearing today. And before I start the... This portion of our public hearing, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion that we combine Item C... I'm sorry, Item B and C, which is the Hosea Road Shooting Range. The verbiage for both of these, not to be redundant, is lengthy, so we can go with combine the two for a self-presentation and we will vote on the items separately.
So move.
Second.
Hearing with a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good afternoon. We have 12 items of our public hearing. Public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal by the proponents. This meeting is videotaped and televised for public viewing. The first item on our agenda is rezoning request, RZN 2021-002, conditional Bob White Lane. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. This is rezoning request, RZN 2021-002, conditional Bob White Lane submitted by Bob Arnett on behalf of Bob White Development LLC, applicant on behalf of Coastal Virginia Partners LLC, contract purchaser, on behalf of Lyndon Knight and Alice Goldstein, property owners in accordance with Sections 31304 and 31305 of the Unified Development Ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk to change the zoning from RR Rural Residential Zoning District to RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District for property located at the end of Bob White Lane zoning map, 12 parcels 24 and 24G. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Cypress Supporting Borough, zoned RR Rural Residential Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to the rezoning request, RZN 2021-002, conditional. Staff Planner Amy Boquicchia will present staff's report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of Planning Commission. This is a conditional rezoning request to rezone approximately 65 acres of property located at the end of Bob White Lane from the RR Rural Residential Zoning District to the RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District for the purpose of constructing 131 single-family detached units. The subject property is located within the suburban use district as designated by the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. This use district recommends approximately one to five units per acre when contemplating a rezoning application. The subject properties consist of tax map 12*24 and 12*24G, which are combined size of, as I mentioned, 65 acres. The properties are located at the end of Bob White Lane next to the Quaker Neck subdivision. The majority of the property is comprised of fields and forested land cover. There's also a barn and several accessory structures. Staff is aware of a graveyard that's on the property and any impacts to the graveyard would require approval from the Department of Historic Resources. The applicant has provided a rezoning exhibit to outline the boundaries of the land to be reclassified to the RLM district, which are starred above. The Comprehensive Plan sets specific themes and policies related to land use, transportation, open space, and the environment that should be considered when contemplating a rezoning application. It is staff's opinion that the requested rezoning to the RLM district is consistent with the policies of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Bob White Lane and nearby Shoulders Hill Road are mostly comprised of suburban-style residential subdivisions. Bob White Lane is largely zoned RR while some portions are zoned RL. The proposed rezoning to the RLM district in conjunction with a proffer number of 131 single-family dwellings is expected to continue predictable and orderly development in this area. The maximum density of roughly two dwelling units per acre that is proposed is found to be compatible with the existing nearby established neighborhoods. Please be advised that a landscape buffer will be required between the subject properties and the Quaker Neck subdivision if rezoned. In accordance with our adequate public facility standards, no rezoning should be approved, which would create a reduction in the levels of service of public facilities. With regards to water and sewer, the Department of Public Utilities expressed no objections to this application. With regards to stormwater management, the design of... The design and treatment of stormwater will be reviewed at the time of site plan review and therefore the Department of Public Works has no objections as well. An environmental site assessment, soils report, and major water quality impact assessment were provided by the applicant. The Department of Public Works Traffic Engineering reviewed the traffic impact study submitted with the application and the associated voluntary proffers, and those items were found to be acceptable. I'll now discuss the impacts to public schools. The subject property is currently served by Florence Bowser Elementary School, John Yates Middle School, and Nansman River High School. The developer is given credit for the school impacts that would be associated with a buy right development on the subject property if it were not rezoned. Since there are 45 acres comprised of uplands, 45 single-family homes could potentially be realized, and so credit was given to the developer for those impacts. After subtracting the students that may be generated by a buy right development, the net number of anticipated elementary school students is 15, the net number of anticipated middle school students is eight, and the net number of anticipated high school students is 11. The elementary and middle school have sufficient capacity to absorb the additional students generated by this proposal. However, at the high school level, there is a deficit. The current fiscal year 2022-2031 Capital Improvement Plan that was in... That was in effect at the time that this application was submitted contains a project that would allow for the advancement at the high school level based upon the projected capacity and projected cost. The cost to advance capacity is roughly $30,000 per school student at the high school level. Therefore, in order to properly mitigate for the impacts to the high school, about $30,000 multiplied by 11 students equates to roughly $330,000 or $2,492 to be exact per dwelling unit that should be voluntarily proffered in order to mitigate for impacts to public schools. The developer has proffered this amount in their proffer statement, which I will now show you above on the next three slides. So the first proffer pertains to advancement to public schools, which I explained and I'm happy to elaborate on if needed. The second proffer stipulates that no more than 131 single-family detached dwellings would be constructed. The third proffer specifies the minimum home square footage. Proffers four through six pertain to construction materials for the homes. Proffer number seven outlines the voluntary traffic improvements, which I'm happy to elaborate on. And lastly, I would like to note that the developer would need to acquire right-of-way from some neighboring properties that they do not own, and those two respective property owners have been included as signatories on the proffer statement, and that is why included this particular slide above, which is the additional signatures of nearby owners. In summary, the proposed rezoning to the RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District is consistent with the policies of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan as this area recommends a density of one to five units per acre, and the developer has proposed roughly two units an acre. Furthermore, the requested RLM district is compatible to the surrounding single-family subdivisions. Therefore, staff recommends approval of rezoning request, RZN 2021-2, in the submitted proffer statement. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amy. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Suffolk Planning Commission, my name is Greer Ferguson. I'm an attorney practicing at 332 Wisconsin's Road here in Suffolk, and I represent Bob White Development, who is seeking this rezoning before you today. I want to thank staff for a well-written report, and as they always do, by the way. So let's talk about what we're attempting to do at the end of Bob White Lane. As you all know, Bob White Lane, over the years, has become a very popular area right off of Shoulders Hill. The entire area up there is well-developed. There's room for more development, but there's a lot going on off of Shoulders Hill Road. There are apartments, there are small houses, there are big houses, and that is what the planners are saying we want to have in our suburban areas. We want a little bit of a mix, anywhere from one house to an acre to five houses to an acre. And in whole, that is what they have accomplished up on the Shoulders Hill Road corridor. Our proposal would end up with about two houses per acre if approved. We would end up building 131 homes on about 65 acres of land right at the end of Bob White Lane. These homes would be nice homes as part of our proffers. 50% of our houses will have to either be brick or hardy plank. And in terms of price range, at this point, we are looking at homes in the $490 to $650,000 range. I guess I'm from the old school, the big numbers to me. And the two-story houses we are proposing would be $2,100 to $3,700. Now, that's not a part of our proffer, but that is a part of our plan. And those units would have anywhere from four to six bedrooms and anywhere from two and a half to four bathrooms. We would be offering some one-story houses, which would be somewhat age-targeted, not necessarily age-restricted, but maybe appealing to a retired couple looking for a smaller one-house, one-story house. And those would be priced at the lower end, and they could still be above $450,000 houses. So we're talking about a nice development. One of the proffers which we had made was that we would have a minimum size of 1,400. After going back and speaking with the people with whom we work, we're going to actually restrict that to 1,500 would be our smallest units. While that's not a part of our proffer, I can only represent that to you. That is the plan. We wouldn't be going down to 14. We would be at 15 on the one-story units. So the area there, you know, you've always got... So we just need to look at the staff report and go down, what are we doing with facilities? And if you go down, go down the staff report, the water and sewer is adequate. The stormwater would be obviously controlled by the planners and nothing... Site plans will not be approved if we cannot meet stormwater standards as required. I think the biggest thing you always run into when you're talking about more development and more houses is transportation. Everyone gets excited about transportation, and I don't blame them. I drive a car, too. So what we are proposing to do, we're proposing to improve Bob White Lane running from on the right, on the right, on the north side, which is River at River Point, where that's one of the newest developments. We would improve Bob White Lane all the way to the back of where it comes into our development. And on the south side, we would improve it and give a 50-foot right-of-way running from the Quaker Neck community. So Bob White Lane, which is, if you go down there, it's like more like a boulevard than a street. It's a wide street in there. And so we would be, that would be widened all the way to the end once our product is finished. In terms of schools, we're not going to impact the elementary schools or the middle schools as pointed out, but we would impact the high schools at the number, actually 11 students. And you get a staggering figure for what that costs, but it comes down to about $29,000 per additional student to cover construction of a high school. So we would be proffering that we would pay the approximately $326,000 or it's $2,492 per unit, and those sums obviously would be paid prior to issuing a building permit on any given unit. We feel that... Let's talk, one other thing on the traffic that I failed and I apologize to you, is we will be doing one off-site road improvement that will help Shoulders Hill Road. We have proffered that we will install a left-hand turn lane where Pewsville Road runs into Shoulders Hill Road to help with traffic congestion at that intersection. So we will actually be doing something that is off-site from our project and even off of Bob White, which we feel will help the traffic patterns in the area and be a benefit to the residents up in this area. So in a nutshell, we're building first-class homes. We're going to have approximately 30 acres of open space where it should be 30 acres of open space, and then the houses will fit into the rest of the area. We feel that it's going to be a development that fits the rest of the surrounding area around Shoulders Hill Road, and we would respectfully ask that you approve this as a welcome addition to the Suffolk development community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in... Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, to the Chair, Vice Chair, and the Reverend Commissioners, good to see you, Edwards and Goodman and all the other Commissioners. I'm Ben Fitzgerald. I serve at a church right there up the street from the place. As a matter of fact, we have several of the members are residents there on Bob White or one of those surrounding communities. And I can tell you, I'm excited about the possibility because of the housing crunch. I think we're all aware of how difficult it has been to find, you know, housing, especially family housing. And I know I have quite a few congregants who we've shared this with, and they are excited, they've gotten the word out, so on and so forth. So I'm not sure which way you're going to go, but I'm standing here really hoping that you'll do this. This will be great. I'm not really involved with all of Suffolk, but I can tell you on the northern end, the housing situation has been extraordinary, to say the least, and to see these homes and to even hear some of what has been shared so far. Again, I am excited. I represent a congregation of some hundreds right there, right around the corner, and we are looking forward to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Fitzgerald. Is there another young man you want to... Do you want to have a comment, sir?
I'm in opposition.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone to speak in favor of this request? We've got four minutes left.
Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, my name is Dominique Kups. Address 3009 Beach Grove Lane. I speak in favor of this project, specifically when you think about, we have Amazon that's right down the road, and we have... I'm also a real estate broker, right? So I know the struggle of families that desire to move to Suffolk, but there's not anywhere for them to go to, right? So when we have divisions, contractors that's looking to build in our area, it's going to really enhance our city as a whole. And so I just wanted to speak on behalf of all the real estate brokers and families that we struggle with trying to find them a place to stay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kups. Anyone else in favor? Hearing none. Is there anyone in opposition?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Councilmembers. I'm Thelonious McLean Burrell. I live at 205 Ashby Court. Retired Army, 30-plus years, and I'm also the president of the HOA there. Again, I'm going to represent 49 members, again, in opposition to what you've heard today. I actually start with what we just heard. There are 377 homes going in, if you look at that upper RR River Club, a quarter mile from where this proposal is going. So plenty of homes already going in in Bob White's Lane to support what you just heard. Again, as a grunt, I want you to focus in on the numbers. You've heard some numbers today that have been talked about but not are recorded in the actual document in front of you. So if you look at the rezoning request, I'm going to focus in on these numbers. They've talked 131 homes, over 45 acres of usable land, of 65 acres. They also talk about 1,400 square foot homes. That's recorded in that request, not what you just heard. The dollar amount that's listed in that request is 390K. None of the numbers you heard today. So if they could present those numbers and those are actually a part now officially, I got it. But that's not what's actually recorded. So with that, here's our opposition. So, correct. You even heard from your own planning commission, all of the communities around this property are the RR, which is one home per acre, or RL, 1.5. Here are some stats from your own tax documents. So Glen Forest, 1.5 homes per acre. Quaker Neck, our average, 1.3 acres. Brittany Farms, 1.5. And then some of the smaller, Creekview, .7. Venice Harbor, .6 acres. The request you heard today, 131 homes on 45 acres, that's less than .25 acres a lot. So just from that numbers, again, being a grunt, I don't know how anyone could say that's consistent with what is in the area that is actually called for in that 2035 Comprehensive Plan. More numbers for you. Again, 1,400 square foot is actually what's in the proffer statement. You could pull it back up and look at whatever number that is. Glen Forest, 2,000 square foot homes. Bob White Landing, that's actually a property built by one of the companies represented by Bob Arnett, 3,000 square foot homes. Bayberry Cove, 2,500 square foot homes. So again, I'm just asking, number to numbers, I just don't see where the consistency is. Likewise, I guess this panel already approved 377 homes to be zoned at RR, at that end of Bob White's Lane. So why would we do anything different here? Again, one home per acre or at least RL, which would get you 1.5 homes per acre. You heard that this is, this is two homes per acre lot because it's a play on the numbers. Mathematically, it doesn't add up. Even if you were to say two homes per 65 acres, that's 120, not the 131 they're talking about. So I go back to the request. 45 acres, that's three homes that they're actually talking about putting in each acre. We all know there's a traffic problem. It's from Bridge Road to Nansman, and Shoulders Hill runs all through it. I work on Exit 8 and live on Shoulder off of Bob White. It takes me 25 minutes to go five miles sometimes, and that's not on 664. Unfortunately, we had a death in the community last year due to heart failure. The homeowner told me this personally, and this is why I'm bringing it up today. This is not hearsay. She didn't just come out and just say, hey, the traffic was a reason. All she said was, the medical response was severely delayed. If that doesn't talk to the traffic that we're already dealing with. Some of your own verbiage on that same traffic. So it's called... The levels of service. So Shoulders Hill Road right now is graded out at LOSD, which is borderline unstable. Bridge Road, LOSE, extremely unstable and unacceptable. These are recorded in your own documents. Pewsville Road, the road that we're talking about having, I guess, a left turn... Pewsville Road, the road that we're talking about having, I guess, a left turn lane added, it is also at LOSE, extremely unstable and unacceptable. I asked this of both the planning commission and the proponent, the traffic study that you did, did you include the 377 homes that have already been approved to go into Bob White lane? So as you come back, I would like them to answer that. For the education, you heard the numbers in the proffer statement. Please clarify, is that to the 45 acres or is it to the 45 homes or is it to 131 homes? And if not, what would be the proffer to cover the difference? Again, lastly, I just focus in on the same 2035 comprehensive plan, which is the reason why my wife somehow got this city guy to build out in Suffolk. I grew up on the 16th floor of a 24-floor project. My wife is from the country. When she first said we were moving to Suffolk, I was like, no way, I'm going back to the city. But I tell you, every day I come home, I'm blessed to be in the area that we built in Quaker Neck. So quality and character of the development, fit in context of surrounding developments and neighborhoods, these are words recorded in that comprehensive plan. I'm telling you, just from the numbers, I don't see the consistency that's backing some of this up. Proport compatibility and land use patterns. Again, well over 95% of the homes within a half mile of this proposal is RR or RL, way lower than the RLM that is being requested today. Lastly, I'll leave you with this. So I'm fortunate, I guess, I built on 4.03 acres of land. It's actually the corner of Bennett Creek and Quaker Neck Creek. I watch the eagles and owls every night, beautiful. This proposal right here would put 10 to 12 homes on my same property that one home is on. Think about that. Before coming here today, I did it this morning. I went out on the back and I looked and left, how does 10 to 12 homes fit in the same area that I currently live? That's the proposal you're hearing and you will get to recommend to go forward to the City Council. So again, on behalf of Quaker Neck Community, I'm now going to ask if anyone else feels the same from not just Quaker Neck, but any other surrounding areas, please stand up and identify yourselves. Bayberry Cove, Bennett Harbor, Brittany Farms. You know, again, it's not just us, but this is not consistent with what we all have paid into and came to Suffolk for. Peace of mind. Thank you for this opportunity.
We have six minutes left. Anyone else to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon Commissioners. My name is Evelyn Jones. I live in Glen Forest and have for the past 30 wonderful years. We moved there because we liked the country atmosphere, but yet the convenience of being closer to Chesapeake Square and other places. I am concerned about increasing the number of houses there. That means traffic. Traffic we don't need. I cannot argue with what the existing zoning is because I also live in an RR and I love it. But I have some figures for you. You want to know? Between Bayberry Cove, Bob White Landing, Quaker's Neck, Glen Forest, River Club, and some miscellaneous lots in between, there are a total of 753 homes. I know, I counted them last week. Those 357 homes allowing for two cars per residence equals 1,506. Bear in mind, I'm only saying that there's two cars per house. I know for a fact there are more, but I needed numbers. All right? That means that there is going to be 3,012 vehicular traffic on Bob White. Bob White is mainly a two-lane road. Yes, they say they got three lanes there, but the three lanes are either a turn lane or parking. There's not a wide bunch of road there. It's more than it was when I moved there. But I'm looking at the fact that there's enough congestion and while I can't stop it for these, this acreage, more than what the zoning will allow, I'm asking, please do not allow them to build more than what the RR allows, because what we're going to need is another traffic light for Fennel Lane and Bob White Landing. We're not going to get out of there and we're going to be stuck there because who's going to let us in? And we're a small, we're the smallest subdivision along there. We're the oldest subdivision. So please give us a break. Don't add any more houses. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in opposition? Last call. Okay. Mr. Ferguson or from up in your group would like to speak in rebuttal to some of the comments that have been made?
Chairman, Members of the Planning Commission, I've listened to our neighbors and, you know, they're legitimate concerns and anytime there's growth, they're going to be concerned. We can't turn our heads to that. But that's the reason we have long-term planning. We cannot look at planning as looking at one or two trees. You've got to look at a forest and that's what the long-term 2035 plan does. It looks at the forest. And the forest is saying that we are in the northern growth suburban area, northern growth suburban, growth. And one of the reasons for that is the city would like to see fairly dense, overall fairly dense, a dense situation so that people don't have to drive so much to get to work. If the workplace is five miles from a development, they want as many people as possible to live close to that five-mile area or two miles. They don't want folks to have to go all the way over to Western Suffolk and pollute the environment by driving. It's a long-term planning issue. We are not putting in, this is not a high-density situation. The staff has told you that the suburban, in the northern growth suburban area, they are recommending anywhere from one to five houses per acre. We are putting two houses per acre. We are under the halfway point of what they feel is a good number to properly fill in a suburban, suburban area which this is designated. Now, I have heard that, well, they only have 45 acres. When the staff is doing the computation for how many, how many houses per acre for a total picture, they're looking at total acreage, not developable. And so, well, we're going to have a piece of land with 165 acres, if she was 65 acres, we're going to put 131 houses on it. That's just about two houses per acre. In terms of the traffic, I don't live there, so I can't comment on what Bob White is like all the time. I do know that I've been out there about 10 times, looking at the property, looking at the neighborhoods, checking out what is going on around us. I have not had any problems getting onto Shoulders Hill Road the times I have been there. Now, I would admit, I haven't been there at 5:00 in the afternoon and I haven't been there at 8:00 in the morning. I've been going at more middle-of-the-business daytimes. I have not seen where traffic has hurt my ability to get from point A to point B out in that area. Again, I appreciate the concerns, but I think we need to look at more of a big picture. I think that staff has given a good recommendation to something that's a long-term issue for this city. The northern area of this city is, is a high-growth area. There's a lot of density up there. Most of these speakers are living in older neighborhoods which developed under a different mentality. We are in 2022 now. We are not living in 1980 anymore. And the concept of what people want in their homes is different. Young people coming in today, they don't want big yards. They want, they want to have a nice home on a smaller lot so on Saturday they can go baseball, play baseball with the kids, or go out with their wife to the beach on Sunday. That is what the young people want and that's who this development is going to attract. They are the workforce. They are the people who are looking for homes in northern Suffolk and they can't find homes because we're a desirable place to live and we've got to give them a product. And I would respectfully ask that you approve this because I believe that it is a good plan in the best long-term interest of our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Is there anyone else to speak in rebuttal to the comments earlier other than Mr. Ferguson? I'm enclosed a public hearing. Commissioners, question, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. This deals with a right-of-way. A point was issued about some property. If you look at the, I guess maybe the city, Amy. In looking at that map right there, Bob White runs into the portion that is designated as the property and it appears that there are some residences down on the water that would be landlocked. Is that, is that what you were talking about or what was mentioned about the access to those right-of-way?
The two property owners that participated in signing the proffer statement are two properties, let me see if I can label here. They're in this area over here, so they're to the right of the subject property. What it is, is those two parcels, you can't really tell due to the scale, but their property lines don't account for the ultimate right-of-way width. And so an additional 10 feet or something to that effect needs to be acquired from those two owners. And so that's why they participated in signing the proffer statement to authorize that they would grant right-of-way in order to extend the public road as needed. And so the public road that's recently been widened and improved out there would be widened through the remainder of this site and then access to the adjacent homes that front on the water would be provided through this property, which it currently is provided through this property. It would just be paved and formalized with, you know, better access.
Okay, thank you. That's my question.
Remain at the podium, Mr. Amy. Any other questions for Ms. Amy while she's there? I have, okay, go ahead. I'll save mine.
We received, I don't know, was you able to see this? We received this, I guess, from the community about the different community zonings around. I don't know if you've seen this. It's just for clarification for me, was River Club a rezoning or was that a buy right?
River Club was a buy-right development on a portion of it. However, they took advantage of an opportunity that the UDO allows, which is if you would like to request a bonus density, you can apply for a conditional use permit. And so River Club sought out the conditional use permit back in around 2016. And so while the property is mostly zoned RR, they have an approved CUP that allowed for about 30 additional single-family homes than would be allowed by right by the RR zoning district. So that was back around 2016 and it's still under construction.
Second question. According to this list, we have Bayberry Cove as RL, Glen Forest as RL, Bob White Landing as RR, Quaker Neck as RR, and I'm not going across the river. My question to you is, were any of these communities developed or rezoned under the 2035 comprehensive plan or were these pre the 2035 comprehensive plan?
They were before the 2035 comprehensive plan.
So these developments were built and approved without the use districts and this other matrix that are being used to kind of determine zoning and things, right? Okay, thank you so much.
Same, I have one question. Mr. Ferguson stated that the fee to the school, for the city for the school system will be paid with the building permits were applied for. My understanding is that that fee would be paid with the COFO is issued?
Correct. Our standard practice is that we receive a proffer payment for school contributions at the time of certificate of occupancy, so not at the time of building permit. So they could begin construction of the homes, they just cannot be occupied until we've received that proper, the proffer payment per unit.
Want to get that clear on the table? Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Ms. Amy. Commissioners, comments?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question to the gentleman who spoke in opposition? My question, because we did receive letters about postponing and tabling and the rest. So my question is, were you all given the opportunity to speak to the developer and were you able to address any questions or concerns that you had prior to today?
We met twice and again, he's built here in Suffolk multiple times. He has other things, I guess, in the dockets. We got no leeway in essence. Again, he's still standing with what he is proposing. We've made all our concerns known as far as the density, actually inconsistencies with the report, because again, it's play on numbers, right? You keep hearing the two homes per acre against the 65, but they're asking for a rezoning request of 2.9 homes, right? So if we stick with 65 homes, they can actually go up to 187 homes if you guys approve this. So again, you know, it's to play on the numbers. You know, 131 to 45 acres is 2.9 homes per acre. So that was in accordance with the rezoning request that they made. So we've highlighted stuff like that, you know, again, what are you really trying to do here? Because, you know, I just physically can't see how 130 homes are going to go in there, but that's not the issue.
Excuse me for interrupting. I didn't want to interrupt you. I just want to make sure I understood that the applicant did have two conversations with the community to the point they tabled it for, make sure that the community had a chance to address any concerns. And I guess I'm understanding for you that in those two conversations, there were no changes to the application that you've seen. I just want to make sure I understand it. And my last question to you is, 130, I guess you are totally against, but is it zero or 45 or 130?
No, that's a great question.
Yes.
We've even said this to the applicant. No, how could we want to stop someone from having the same opportunity we're having? We would never say that. All we're saying is make it consistent. So unfortunately, that's with your own numbers that, you know, as you state, even though our communities were built prior to the, I guess, 2035, even our areas are now still being looked at according to those metrics. So those metrics are RR, RL. So to me, RL for 45 to 65 acres, that'll still put 60 to 80 homes in there, which is much more livable in our minds to 130 homes on top of 377 homes that are already going in. That's the backend. So sir, when you were reporting, I thought you were going to bring that out. That's the dead inside of Bob White. That's not the lead inside. So you're talking about within a quarter mile, you're talking 500-plus homes coming out in essence, five driveways. That's what you're talking about. And if you're sitting here, you know, again, if you, if your body is saying that is okay with the city, I guess we got to live with it. As the President, I was away last year. I was actually in the Pacific for the whole year. So trust me, if, you know, we had the opportunity to voice a bigger concern to River Club, we would have done that. But, you know, unfortunately, I wasn't here for that.
I'm done with questions. I thank you.
All right, thank you.
Governor?
I've got a comment. I live on Bridge Road, and to get onto Bridge Road off of 664 can be a parking lot if something happens on the Montreux Merrimack. Your two escape routes is Porson Boulevard on to Shoulders Hill or Pewsville. Pewsville has traffic that is unbelievable. It's a very rural, narrow road. I think personally, the speed's too fast, but on any given afternoon, that speed is about a mile an hour. It can sometimes take you 45 minutes to get from 664 to Shoulders Hill, and then you're still bumper-to-bumper when you get to Bridge Road at best. I have been out to this site several times, one Friday afternoon, any given afternoon, and as you pull out of Bob White, you have no more than 100 foot from one stoplight to the next. So as people pull out regardless, you're gridlocked. I guess it was last Friday I went to come out of there. I went through six light cycles waiting to get off Bob White Road. Again, that's the escape route for 664, and when Bridge Road or something, and it's all just turns into a parking lot. I don't think we're helping the project or helping any of the, you know, Shoulders Hill is in phases of getting, you know, fixed, but that's a long ways up the road. And again, Pewsville, I don't know what the plans for that are, but that's would be an absolute nightmare to live in there. So with that being said, I'm not going to be able to support this. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just looking over the staff's recommendation, the proposed density of roughly two units per acre aligns with the 1 to 5 units per acre recommended with the suburban use district of the 2035 comprehensive plan, but the RR also aligned with that as well, does it not, with the 1 acre per unit? So is the justification from the city's standpoint for approving the rezoning a seeking of some diversity back there? More units, a range of housing values that people might have an option to purchase? Because, I mean, I guess reading that, then, you know, the RR aligned with what is in the 2035 comprehensive plan, and I realize they both do. So I'm just wondering whether, you know, because of traffic and everything, does one outweigh the other?
I think that's a great question, and in a lot of ways, it's all relative, right? You have the RL district, the RLM, and the RM that all fit within the suburban use districts, 1 to 5 units per acre. When you look at the surrounding development patterns, a lot of this predated the UDO update and certainly the 2026 comprehensive plan, which was the predecessor of the 2035. So they were zoned, I guess appropriately based upon the density that they yielded when the city did its citywide rezoning in 1998. I think we looked closely to the Shoulders Hill corridor as well, north of Pewsville Road, which is still within a linear mile or so of the site, in which you get into much higher density, and its proximity also to the entering suburban use district, which is really at Pewsville Road, very near the site. So we look at the location within the use district as well in making our consideration. And then our housing chapter of the comprehensive plan speaks to a variety of levels to diversification of housing stock. So yeah, those are certainly considerations that staff makes when they analyze applications.
I'd make a motion for denial of RZN 2021-002.
Motion for denial?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Creekmore. Any discussion in the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I am torn, but I will say this. One of the principles of the 2035 comprehensive plan was that we was on the, we was moving ourselves toward building more on less. And looking at, I really liked this chart that was given to us. Looking around it, no, you do not see any RLM, but also taking into consideration is the fact that it is in the suburban district, and they have the ability to go up to five units per acre, and this application is not going that far. And, you know, if it was closer to the entering, I think as Mr. Wine just pointed out, you know, more density things and even more flexibility could be given, but it's kind of in the middle, so two isn't. Now, this area is landlocked, which is kind of my, you know, problem, but I have not personally heard anything consistent to say that it doesn't go against the growth patterns that are going on. I just wanted to make that clear before I voted. And I'm seeing that this RLM zoning would not be inconsistent with what's already in the surrounding area.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before I call for Mr. Wine to call the vote, a yes vote is for denial, and a no vote is the other way. Mr. Wine, you call the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
No.
Commissioner Goodman?
No.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
No.
And Chairman Singleton?
No.
Mr. Chairman, the vote fails by a vote of three to four.
Motion failed. Can I get a motion to, for a yes vote for this to go forward? So we're going to send it with the council with the vote. In essence, we're sending it as a yes, but do we want to take a vote on it?
Well, Mr. Chairman, for the record, I'll make a motion that RZN 2021-02 be approved with the conditions.
Second motion.
A point. What are we voting for?
So basically, now you went from a yes to a no.
Thought that's what we already did. I mean, the motion was voted down. It was, the voting should go forward as a denial. We have denied.
The denial didn't win.
The denial did pass.
What was the vote at the count on that?
Three yeses to four nos.
Now it's reversed. No means yet.
This is, I refer to the council. Are we okay with where we're going?
Yes.
Thank you.
Call the vote?
Call the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore?
The vote, my vote would be to deny, so there would be approve, so I would vote yes, no. I would vote no. Will the city council understand that?
Yes.
Yes, sir. So that's a no.
It's correct. It's a no.
Commissioner Eberwine?
No.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
No.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that vote passes by a vote of four to three.
This will go to council with a vote of four, four, and three against at the July 20th meeting. Thanks for your attention. Moving along, the next item on our agenda is the one that we voted early on that we're going to combine, conditional use permit request CUP 2022-002, Hozier Road Shooting Range, and conditional use request CUP 2022-014, Hozier Road Private School. Mr. Wine, will you read the caption, please?
Yes. First, conditional use permit request CUP 2022-002, Hozier Road Shooting Range, submitted by Jack Claude of Hagerd Yore Associates, applicant on behalf of Kevin Glenn, 1255 Hozier Road LLC, Hozier Road Associates 2 LLC, and Hozier Road Associates 3 LLC, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a shooting range on property located at 1255 Hozier Road, zoning map 44, parcels 126 and 127, and zoning map 45, parcel 21. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Cypress Voting Borough, Zoned M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District and A Agricultural Zoning District. The 2035 comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Rural Agricultural Use District. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to city council relating to conditional use permit request CUP 2022-002. The second request is conditional use permit request CUP 2022-014, Hozier Road Private School, submitted by Jack Claude, Hagerd Yore Associates, applicant on behalf of Kevin Glenn, Hozier Road Associates 2 LLC, and Hozier Road Associates 3 LLC, property owner, in accordance with Section 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a school private on a property located at 1444 Hozier Road, zoning map 44, parcel 127, and zoning map 45, parcel 21. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Cypress Voting Borough, Zoned A Agricultural Zoning District. The 2035 comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the Rural Agricultural Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to city council relating to conditional use permit CUP 2022-014. Staff planner Amy Boekie will present staff's report.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the introduction. I will be presenting two CUP applications concurrently as they affect some of the same property. The first CUP request is a request to allow the use of multiple outdoor shooting ranges on three properties that are south of downtown and located on the east and west sides of Hozier Road. The second CUP is to establish a private school on two parcels instead of all three parcels, and the property is located on the east side of Hozier Road only. The affected property overall is located in the Rural Agricultural Use District as designated by the 2035 comprehensive plan, thus it is outside of the central growth area. CUP 2022-2 pertains to the shooting range, which involves two parcels on the east side of Hozier Road located at 1444 Hozier Road, tax map 44*127, and tax map 25*21, which does not have an assigned address to it. Both of those properties on the east side of Hozier Road are zoned agricultural currently. The third parcel subject to the shooting range application is 1255 Hozier Road, tax map 44*126, which is located on the west side of Hozier and is zoned M2 Heavy Industrial. The concurrent CUP number 2022-14, which is for the private school, only pertains to the property on the east side of Hozier Road. The reason that these are being treated as two separate conditional use permits is because they involve two different types of land uses as outlined in the UDO, and they also pertain to two different zoning districts. A private school is not allowed in the M2 zoning district, and so that is why the private school is only pertaining to the right-hand side of the property. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to clarify. The private school would consist of education and safety training as well as tactical and non-tactical instruction. The surrounding zoning in this area is a mix of agricultural and heavy industrial. Nearby uses include the Suffolk Executive Airport and low-density residential to the The property was issued a notice of violation in April of this year as the owner was not aware that a CUP was needed for this type of use, and therefore they have submitted the two separate CUPs in an effort to come into compliance with their full intent for their operations. The subject properties total roughly 284 acres in size, and there are existing vegetative buffers on most sides of the property. The activities that they propose will be available for federal, state, and local and governmental personnel, as well as any additional members from the general public that join the organization by paying dues. 1444 Hozier Road has three existing structures and a small firearm shooting range as shown above. There are several meeting rooms and office areas in the existing building that are proposed for training for up to 75 members. There are 50 existing parking spaces and adequate undeveloped area on the site to accommodate more parking if needed, should the CUPs be approved. Any improvements to the property overall would require a site plan to be reviewed and approved by staff. Three shooting ranges are proposed, an 800-yard, 800-yard range, a 200-yard range, as well as a 50-yard range, that would be designed to accommodate about 12 members at one time. The proposed hours of operation for the shooting range facilities are generally from dawn until dusk and will not be utilized overnight. The entrances are proposed to be fenced and gated at all times. The proposed hours of operation for the private school courses are generally Monday to Saturday from dawn until dusk, as well as Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to dusk, which would align with the concurrent request for the shooting range. However, the private school also proposes some overnight primitive camping training courses to take place outdoors. This particular activity, according to the applicant, should not produce high levels of noise or odor or vibration or, you know, negative impacts related to those activities that would expand beyond the boundaries of the property. The application narrative states the guests will be required to check in and park at 1444 Hozier Road where they have an entrance gate. The guests that desire to visit any of the other shooting ranges, if they're across the street, they would be transported via a bus and escorted by staff members of the shooting range. A conditional use permit recognizes uses that because of their unique characteristics or potential impacts on adjacent land uses are not generally permitted in certain zoning districts as a matter of right. Rather, such uses may be permitted when the right set of circumstances and conditions are found to be acceptable. As stated, the properties are located within the Rural Agricultural Use District, which is outside of the city's growth areas where high concentrations of residential uses are not anticipated. The properties are zoned a combination of M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning as well as A Agricultural Zoning. The M2 district allows for uses such as heavy manufacturing and industrial uses. As such, conflict with the proposed uses is not anticipated in those zoning districts. While the agricultural district allows for low-density residential development, the subject properties are considered to be a suitable size and significantly buffered from nearby uses such that minimal conflicts are anticipated. Due to the site's proximity to the Suffolk Executive Airport, a representative from the airport did review the application and expressed no concerns regarding their conceptual layout. The Department of Public Works Traffic Engineering also reviewed this application. They recommended that all entrances are upgraded to a hard surface, et cetera, as well as if there are vehicles transporting folks across the street, that those be done in a, an equipped vehicle that's designed for use on a public street. So not things like a golf cart. A bus would be used for that. Additionally, the applicant has proposed no trespassing signs along the perimeter of the sites where there is not dense vegetation. They've also proposed a minimum of 50 surveillance cameras throughout the property, and they stated that there would be certified first aid personnel on-site at all times. The outdoor shooting ranges will have berms on all sides that would measure 20 feet in height and 11 feet in depth. These safety measures, in conjunction with the recommended conditions of approval in each of the staff reports presented to you, should prevent these uses from becoming a detriment or endangerment to public health, safety, or welfare. or endangerment to public health, safety, or welfare. The applicant did provide a noise level exhibit that depicts the potential noise impacts measured in decibels from the two shooting range locations. The noise exhibit shows that the sound should not exceed about fifty-five decibels at any of the sample points that they've shown on their exhibit, and if so, the noise levels would comply with the UDO noise standards. In summary, the proposed outdoor shooting ranges and private school are located at an appropriate location outside of the city's growth areas within the M-two or A zoning districts respectively. They also appear to be located a sufficient distance away from any nearby residential uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP twenty twenty-two dash two and CUP twenty twenty-two dash fourteen for the private school, with the conditions that are noted in each of the staff reports. And we hope that the conditions that are included in the staff reports would mitigate any negative impacts. That concludes my information. I'm happy to answer any questions after the public hearing has closed for each individual application. Thank you.
Ms. Amy. We'll now open the public hearing. Who would be here in favor of this request?
My name is Jack Claude. I'm acting as the agent on this project. In the interest of brevity, I think we've got a good project. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that anybody has. And I'll go back and take my seat.
Your name again, please?
Jack Claude.
Jack Claude, that's what I thought. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Claude. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone in the audience to speak in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, fellow members of the Commission, my name is Reverend Randy Skeeter, and I'm currently the president of the Skeeter Town Civic League. And we have been privileged to just hear about this recently, and it would seem that most of the boxes have been checked, according to the presentation, about who needed to hear from this, except for the people who live in the community. I'm here right now to tell you that, behalf of the Civic League, we are in opposition of this because this particular community, even though this proposed facility is on the end of Skeeter Town Civic League's boundaries, it encompasses a community right down the street, or the road, Hozier Road, where it starts to get low density because that's the way it's owned, okay? But it's a lot of houses, a lot of houses that have been there for a long time. And then it goes through to Meadow Country Road along with Skeeter Town Road. Same thing, a lot of houses that have been there for a long time. So, that would indicate that the owners of these houses are getting up in age. According to the meeting that we just had, the residents in that area are very scared of bullets, okay? The sound of bullets. And, okay, I know the box was checked about the noise level, but it rule areas, if any of you all know what I'm talking about, bullet sounds go for a long ways, okay? And one question I would have would be, can you guarantee that all the bullets are going to go in the right direction? Right now, there are neighbors that they get in their backyards and they shoot off their guns and things like that. And currently, Commissioner Edwards knows that right down the street from him are a lot of houses that have been built recently. And the children, when you hear a bullet, you don't know where it's coming from. You don't know where it's going. And it's a sad state of affairs when you have to tell your children to go inside. We live out there because we want to, okay? We're not in urban combat zone. And it's sad that the developer of this didn't even consider the neighborhood to make a presentation to let us know what was going on. So, my question is, or actually, the Civic League's question is, I'm just the mouthpiece. Is this like a Blackwater facility, okay? Urban combat, tactical warfare? I mean, you hear about there's going to be schools, but this is not the Boy Scouts that are going to be there, okay? These are some people that are going to be training. For what? Did you hear that? I don't think so. So, is it for urban combat? Right on the edge of a neighborhood where people have to go inside soon as they start hearing the bullets? Maybe it's within the noise level that is constructed by whatever the level is. However, bullets are bullets. This is what the Civic League is concerned with. So, you put this in, and you just let it run wild, and you got to have buses to transport from one facility to the other? What is this? Tactical warfare training? I mean, come on, nobody's answered that question. I'm sure the gentleman will give you some sort of answer here in a minute. But on behalf of the Civic League and the community, which encompasses the part of Hozier Road going south, Badger Drive, Skeeter Town Road, Airport Road, we're not in favor of this. We don't understand it, we're scared of it, and I don't think we should live in a place where this is put in. You know, like I said, everybody's thinking it's Blackwater, some sort of tactical warfare training. Bullets fly, okay? I heard about the, I forgot what they call it, but the sand, the dirt, twenty-foot high, so many feet wide, okay? That'll stop a bullet. However, you got to hit that for it to stop. If you don't hit it, guess what? It keeps on going until it hits something. So, on behalf of the Civic League, I'm just trying to tell you that we are in opposition of this, and we prayerfully ask you to deny this permit, at least until we can get better answers or something. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Skeeter. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
My name is William Hunter. I live on the White Marsh Road, the other side, I guess, the east side of the property. My land borders that property. And I'm concerned about it from the aspect of all the shooting and noise. They've had some going on for a while, not a lot. But you hear it. And being at White Marsh Road, there's a lot of houses, like he just spoke about on Hozier, Skeeter Town, all that. There's a lot of houses, a lot of people live on the White Marsh Road. And my thing is, not only the noise, but who's going to see to it they're going to keep the bullets in those bunkers that they've described? So many feet tall, so thick. The other thing, I own three hundred and seventy-five acres in that parcel there. I have a hundred and seventy-five acres of it is wooded. I have people, and in the pond, the big pond that runs across the border about there, we do a lot of duck hunting. We do a lot of deer hunting, bear hunting. I have a twelve-year-old grandson that's growing up loving to hunt. Well, if they're going to be back there shooting six, seven days a week, the hunting will be gone, the deer, the bear will be gone. The ducks and stuff will probably not come back to the pond. Why not have some kind of hour thing from like ten to two during hunting season, rather than dawn to dusk? Give people opportunity that have been hunting for years. I have a group of men and young people been coming to hunt on my property for fifteen years, since I bought it in 'oh one. And we've become very close friends and all. Anyway, I'm not for it either. It sounds like something that you would hear about in Montana, Texas, the Rural Park, Rural Country Act, where nobody's really populated around. I'm not for it at all either. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Anyone else in opposition? I was in error. I should have mentioned we had doubled the time on the, for the proponents and for the opponents. But seeing we have no one else in opposition, will the proponents, Mr. Claude, you have any comments to address the items that were brought up?
Sir, the people that are going to be here are not the type of shooter that would send a round up. They wouldn't shoot over their head. It would, these people are here to train. They're federal, they're state, they're local. Law enforcement, for the most part. The other, the other applicants that are here are going to be people like myself that are there to get better, to hit the target, try to hit it a little better than I could yesterday. It's, they're going to be range safety officers. All of those are tested and have passed those examinations to be range safety officers. There's no, there's no horsing around, there's no, it's a professional organization. It's not, it's not something where I'm considered worried that a round may go off by accident, but that would be very, very few and far between. And that would be due to a weapons malfunction, not due to somebody trying to shoot over the berm. Those berms are there to keep those rounds in. And then typically, the people that are shooting at them are going to be hitting at them or very near them. We did the sound study, and there were a few instances where we called on the phone for the shot. Not only did we not get it registered, we had to ask them, hey, did you shoot? We were so far away from those shots that we just couldn't hear them. Now, typically, wind will affect that sound. And we were always on the upwind side, and that's why we couldn't hear them. But they were that far away and that quiet that we don't think it's going to be that big a concern. Now, we've been shooting out there for over twenty years. This particular site has had a permit to be able to do shooting out there, and we've been doing shooting. No complaints, no concerns, no issues. Thank you very much.
There's no more. What am I looking for? No one else want to speak in favor of this request? And no one's...
Good afternoon, gentlemen and ladies. I'm Rayford Yura, Hoggard Yura Associates, and we are located in Portsmouth, Virginia. We do quite a bit of work in Suffolk. I think it was only fair that I stand up here and share with you some of the history of this so-called school, shooting range, whatever. I'd like to go back a little bit in history, and probably most of you, except the younger ones, remember Congressman Owen Pickett. Owen Pickett used to own this property, or the most of it, in a partnership. And I was fortunate enough to be good friends of Congressman Pickett. I surveyed this property back in the eighties for him. Of course, he's now deceased. And back in the day, he used that as a get-together for friends, other people in politics, and they had several get-togethers, shooting pheasants that were brought in and that kind of thing. That has been able to be perpetuated every year. And so, this is not something new. I haven't heard anybody up here today say, well, if we hear guns all the time and so on and so forth, and it bothers us. I mean, this is like something that's been going on, like I say, for all this time. I think there's a misconception here. This has been a group of people who enjoy the camaraderie of hunting, deer hunting, which is beneficial man out there on the edge of the swamps, bear hunting, and so on and so forth. This is not, as it was alluded a while ago, a Blackwater or training facility for the military or whatever. Yes, I do believe that Suffolk will benefit from this with an area for training, not only with guns, but vehicles and other things. I think there's a lot of benefit that can come to the Commonwealth of Virginia and to the people. Now, here again, I thought we covered all the bases with everybody involved. I did not know about the Civic League in Skeeter Town, how many members they have or whatever. But this is a well-thought-of and conceived operation, and I do honestly believe that Suffolk particularly will benefit from it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Yura. Have we now closed the public hearing? Commissioners, question, comments?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Claude, do you mind coming back to the podium, please? If you could, discuss a little bit more, if you will, about what the school is going to do? And you were talking about clientele of, you know, federal, state, and local law enforcement and whatnot. Can you just broaden that for us a little bit?
I guess the brief version would be, police officers may need some special training to reach their certification. That's, the school would be there to do that. There's special equipment that SWAT may need, may need some special education in how to use that equipment. The school would be there to help them with that. Tactics that SWAT may need to learn how to go to the back of a house instead of the front, or along that line. It's just a school for that type of specialized training. These guys are able to go get the specialized instructors to be able to come to teach the specific classes that are needed.
Thank you.
Mr. Claude, while you're there, any other questions for Mr. Claude? Mr. Claude, come back up, please.
Mr. Claude, just had one quick question. According to the staff report, we're here also because of a notice of violation. Can I get an understanding of why there was a notice of violation?
I'm not crystal clear on that. They were operating this training facility based on a permit we had gotten from Department of Game and Inland Fisheries. Thought that we were in good standing, but Suffolk told us we weren't quite. Once that happened, we immediately went to make a move to get this CUP, to get that corrected.
That's it for me.
Stay there.
I have a question.
Okay.
Is the city police department currently using the facility?
I'm not certain if they're currently using it. I don't work at that facility. I work in Portsmouth. I know they're standing by and ready to use it, looking forward to using it. They have been out there before, and I don't think there's an officer in the city that doesn't enjoy it.
One other question, and I didn't see this in the, in the city's report, but we had a firing range come up years ago for the city was looking into an indoor facility for. And there was a limitation of where ranges for training were available. I think they were using the state police facility up in Windsor. And one of the things that came out of that discussion was the fact that the land was... And one of the things that came out of that discussion was the fact that the land was pretty much loaded with lead from the used-up rounds. Is there any reclamation that would be planned for removal of the projectiles over a period of time, or is that something that would be done?
Yes, and that's fairly normal. So, we talk about the berms and how tall and wide they are, and they, they'll catch that lead periodically, and I'm sorry, I don't know the exact time, but periodically, we would go through with a backhoe or a front-end loader, load that dirt out, replace it with new clean dirt, take that contaminated soil and dispose of it properly, yes, sir.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Will you sit down, Mr. Claude?
Thank you.
Now, I said before. Is Mr. Kevin Glenn in the audience?
Yes, sir.
Will you come up to your, to the podium, please? I have a couple of questions for you.
Sir.
I understand that this shooting facility has been in operation roughly 22 years.
That is correct, on the east side of Hojar Road.
On the east side of Hojar Road, so that's the side that the school is going to be on?
That is correct.
Where the buildings are, where you, they're dead, okay?
Sir.
The, I think, Mr. Staler just mentioned, the city of Suffolk tried, how many years ago, to put a shooting range out on, by Center Point, and council didn't go with it because of funds, and now it was slated to move to Carolina Road where the new, where the bypass ends, in that area. Have you been in contact with the police department to offer this facility for their training?
Yes, they have been out there on-site many times.
Very short with your answers. You care to elaborate at all?
During one of our yearly shoots that we have over there for our clients, that we had probably roughly 25 to 30 of the police officers out there to understand what was going on, for them to see, how do you deal with large crowds with guns? Meaning, what we've got over there was what's called a tower shoot. Roughly at any given time, there's 200 guys with shotguns enjoying taking part of bird hunting. They had no idea of how to have crowd control with that many guns. Very positive outlook. Chief Chandler's been out there many a times and seen it, seems excited about it. We've talked to many people on council, as you were bringing up, the past possible shooting ranges in this area, that we would offer to enter a memorandum of understanding for fire, police, first responders, to be able to use this facility.
Okay. Other than members, I think they mentioned 75 members, will the city, a citizen of the city have an opportunity to come to that facility for any small armed training?
Yes, anybody can come, but you've got to go through a vetting process, similar to that of buying a firearm, that just the average guy cannot walk up, say, hey, I want to go shoot. We've got to have a background check, which we will provide on-site, we'll have your ID. So, basically, if you're a convicted felon, outstanding warrants, same thing with buying a firearm, you cannot be a member. And you cannot show up out there at any given time. Everything goes through a scheduling procedure, that you've got to schedule to do your shooting out there. And everybody talks about this being a firearms and shooting, one of the other things we've got out there that people hadn't mentioned, is we've got a large sporting clay facility there. So, it's not just shooting pistols and rifles, there's a lot of shotguns and clay pigeon shooting going on also.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. That's it for me. Question, Mr. Goodman?
So, for the best-kept secret in Suffolk to now be exposed, it, I can understand why a lot of people can't really embrace it. So, there's poor PR that now is being brought out, because if the community would have had an idea that it's been there for 22 years, it'd be a different subject now. I think it's awesome if, if it's going to be utilized for the police and different ones, but you can understand why the community, they can't understand, they don't know what's going on there. So, the PR, and now having to come out to get a permit, I think was poorly, poorly done, because, I mean, we've got to respect our communities. So, I don't know how you all is going to get the community to be able to understand. It's been there, evidence has been successful with whatever you all have been doing, but they didn't know it, because nobody knew it was there. So, now, the best secret, kept secret is out, so how do we embrace it and not really have a good understanding of it? I mean, I'm quite sure that you all have been doing a good job, if not, then everybody would have known about it. So, you know, where do we go from here? I think that's going to be, to my point, and that community, and the communities that now knows all about it, because now everybody's going to know about it. So, I think you need a PR campaign, one way or another.
I don't know, I don't have a question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Glenn and Mr. Claude.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I get information from council, I mean, from the lawyer to give us a clear indication of the best way of doing this. But we're here because there's a notice of violation. I mean, we can't, we just can't run that under the, but I don't feel comfortable sending this to the city council for them to vote on, to make a final decision without the community having an opportunity to get the same information, any questions that they would like answered, before this goes for a final vote. So, I know it's two applications. So, my question is, do I take care of it one at a time, or can I do both, just one at a time? Okay. Mr. Chairman, this is my motion. I move for CUP 2022 dash zero zero two to be tabled for 30 days.
I second. Motion I second for tabled for 30 days. Mr. Wyman, you call. Any questions on the motion?
And Mr., can I ask one question, Mr. Claude? And I guess it's for you and Reverend Skeeter. Mr. Claude, do you think in 30 days you would be able to schedule a meeting with the community, if this motion passes, to outline what we've heard today, so the community can feel more comfortable?
I'll be available to do that this week.
Okay. Reverend Skeeter said he backed it up, so. And I'm going to ask Reverend Skeeter the same question, before we send it on to a vote, I just want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Reverend Skeeter, would 30 days be adequate for you and Mr. Claude to get together to discuss this?
Our, yes, I believe it would. We just had a civic league meeting, our next one is the second Tuesday in the month of July. So, that fits within 30 days, if we could do that.
At your convenience.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We've got 30 days. All right.
And, Mrs. Claude, can you make arrangements for the community to visit the site, to see this berm that we're talking about and the height? Could that be, is that possible, Mr. Glenn? Okay.
Chairman, if I could, excuse me, I don't know if 30 days would be sufficient to get out there and visit the site, though.
They wouldn't get a representative, like yourself?
It could.
They trust you.
Thank you. I'll do my best.
Yeah.
Do my best.
Okay, thank you, Reverend Skeeter.
Is there any way they could hold the civic meeting at the site? I mean, that would kind of kill two birds with one stone.
Literally.
Yeah.
Wrong terminology.
Maybe poor choice of words there.
Reverend Skeeter, the question was, you think you could have your civic meeting at the location, they have a facility there with classroom?
Think so, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify, the only reason why I'm even doing the table is because I want to make sure the community, before we send this to council, that the applicant and the community have a chance to address their concerns. That's the only reason.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
And, Mr. Chairman, I call for the vote.
Thank you. Mr. Wyman, you call the vote.
Yes, sir.
And this is CUP 2022 zero zero two.
Yes, and the motion is to table this request for 30 days. Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Staylor.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector.
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that vote passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Chairman, I think it would also be helpful to us if maybe the police chief would, would appear when this comes back before us, because I'd like to hear, since we're dealing with firearms, it wouldn't hurt for us to hear directly from the mouth of the, of the police chief, what they feel about this. Just a suggestion.
Mr. Chadwick, you're ready.
Mr. Chairman, I request that we, I move that CUP 2022 dash zero one four is tabled for 30 days.
I guess I have a quick question for the city attorney. Do they need to open the separate public hearing and close it?
I believe the chairman had opened both, and the speaker seemed to be going to both, so.
Okay, just want to make sure we're, we're good. Sorry.
Do it again. Okay. We're closing the public hearing on CUP 2022 zero zero two, with the motion being taken to forward this to count, to table this for 30 days. Okay, now, we'll move to CUP 2022 dash zero one four for Mr. Edwards to make a motion.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move that we table CUP 2022 dash zero one four for 30 days.
Second it.
Got a second on the motion, okay. Any question, discussion of the question, of the motion? Mr. Wyman, you call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Staylor.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector.
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Claude and Mr. Glenn, this will be going, be tabled for 30 days, for you to have opportunity to meet with the community of Skeeter Town, Civic League, and possibly have a meeting at your location with the Civic League, and come back next month, 30 days from now. Thank you. We're going to try one more item before we go to a recess, commissioners. The next item on our agenda is Item D, Conditional Use Permit Request, CUP 2022 dash zero zero nine, Wall Street Cafe. Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Yes, sir, this is Conditional Use Permit Request, CUP 2022 zero zero nine, Wall Street Cafe, submitted by Dominic Epps, Wall Street Cafe, Inc., applicant and property owner, on behalf of Danita Hayes, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31 306 and 31 406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a bar and nightclub on property located at 118 West Washington Street, zoning map 34 G 18A, parcel 301. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Suffolk Voting Borough Zone CBD, Central Business District, Zoning District, and HC, Historic Conservation Overlay District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area, Mixed Use Core District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to Conditional Use Permit, CUP 2022 zero zero nine. Staff Planner Erin Deers will present staff's report.
Good afternoon. This, the applicant proposes to establish a bar and nightclub for the purposes of having live entertainment, including open mic nights, such as spoken word, singing, rapping, live instrumentation, game nights, and karaoke. The applicant proposes to utilize only the ground floor of the existing building, which is currently Wall Street Cafe, for the proposed use as the second floor is being used as an office and storage area, and will only be accessed by employees. There is adequate parking on street and in the city lots in the immediate area. The applicant is proposing live entertainment hours of 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Mondays, 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM Tuesdays through Thursdays, and 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Fridays and Saturdays, with special event hours of 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. However, staff is continuing to recommend the hours that have been consistently approved, 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM Sunday through Thursday, and 9:00 AM to midnight Friday and Saturdays. These hours are for the live entertainment only, and do not affect the restaurant hours. The Conditional Use Permit recognizes that because of their unique characteristics and potential impacts on adjacent land uses, are not generally permitted in certain zoning districts as a matter of right. Rather, such uses are permitted through the approval of a CUP, when the right set of circumstances and conditions are found acceptable. Each of these conditions are addressed in staff's report. Staff finds the proposed use meets the criteria for a Conditional Use Permit set forth in Section 31 306 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of CUP 2022 zero zero nine, with the 13 conditions as noted in staff's report and in the attached resolution. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deers. We'll now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
All right, Chair, Vice Chair, and the Commission board members, my name is Dominic Epps. I am the co-owner of Wall Street Cafe, and I have my partner, Danita Hayes, with me as well. We'll come into, first, I just want to clarify to the audience, I know that when the audience has read, and it says nightclub, bar, let me just ensure everyone that this is not going to be a nightclub, all right? But I understand the ordinance reads as follows. Basically, Wall Street Cafe is your version of a Starbucks, all right? But what we're looking to do is to add a live entertainment portion to different special events that we will hold at the cafe, such as open mics, karaoke's, and things of that nature, all right? And our current hours are from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So, what we're looking to do on weekends only is to add live entertainment that will not exceed the 11:00 PM hour. And if you have any questions, we're here to answer any question that you all may have.
And we also have cameras inside and outside of the cafe as well.
All right, thank you.
Is anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone to speak in opposition?
Bear with me, I recently had surgery, so. I, we own the property right next door to them. I'm a little concerned about, you know, the way that you want to set this up, there'll be alcohol, there'll be live entertainment, like you said, there might be drug use, and when you mix alcohol and drug use and dancing and whatnot, there could be violence, you know, guns could be involved, people can get hurt, people can get killed. It's going to affect property values, there is a resident, it is mainly residential over there. The property across the street, that was converted into residences, 130 West Washington Street also has residences. We're looking to sell our property to people who would convert upstairs into residences, and we're just concerned with all the, you know, shootings and things that have been happening, and are we inviting trouble here? And just want to let you know that I have a friend, he's a UPS driver, he's actually my UPS driver. His daughter was the pilot reporter, and she got killed in the Norfolk shooting by the bar, and you guys must have heard of it. Three, I think three people died as a result. And if you look at statistics, you know, where those kind of places are there, there's an increase in violence, increase in crime, and it's going to cost the taxpayers, it's going to cost the city. going to cost the city, and I don't see the benefit of this. I don't mind him being successful, bringing something, you know, that could add to the, you know, what the city's trying to do, but I just don't think this is the right idea.
Would you give us your name and your address, please?
Yeah, Manoj Kibani or Mark Kibani, 124 West Washington Street. And if this is correct, the nightclub, you can Google search all this information. The average decibel level is like 106, the lawnmower decibel level is 95, and the peak level can be 131. Now, if he's talking about outdoor entertainment, and there are people that are residing there in that community, on that block, actually, 131 is just a low estimate for the peak. It can go to 140, 150. I mean, do you really want that kind of environment there? And that's it, for me, I guess.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Your proponents? Any other opposition for this request? I'm sorry. Thank you.
My name is Sue Woodward. I live at 227 North Main Street. I have talked to the city a lot about what's going on, lots of people in the city about what's going on downtown these days, and I have been disturbed when several different people have said, well, you know, those folks downtown chose to live there, so they should expect some noise. Well, I live downtown. I don't live on West Washington Street, I live a block and a half away. I expect traffic noise, I expect sirens, I expect the occasional street person making noise in the night, but I don't expect to have the kind of noise I've heard reported downtown at 12 o'clock and 2 o'clock, and the kind of activity I've heard about. But I shouldn't blame that on Wall Street Cafe, because they are not it. I hope they're not going to be. I was glad to hear what they said. I wonder how many nightclubs we plan to have downtown. The city has told me several times, I've read it in the paper, too, about this park that lots of city officials are really excited about, and they talk about it's going to be for families, and it's going to bring all these people downtown to eat and to shop. Neither of those things can be done in a, well, I take that back. Shopping can't very well be done in a nightclub, and you don't think of that as being a place where you'd take your family to eat. I wonder where you stop. How many of theirs, of those will there be? I'm so glad to hear that the applicants are talking about ending sooner than other nighttime activities downtown. I don't object to their having an ABC license. There are three places between me and them, three establishments, that have ABC license, and they've never caused any trouble that I know anything about. But, once again, if they are mindful, if they're going to be, if they're going to end as early as they thought they were, that sounds like an improvement. But, as you consider these things, I feel like everybody in this city has a right to some peace and quiet, no matter where they live. How many nightclubs do you want across the street from you or in your neighborhood? Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none. Mr. Epps, would you like to address the issues that was brought up?
Yes, so that was the reason why I stated about the ordinance being named a bar nightclub, because we're not, we do not have a nightclub. This is not a lounge, this is not a dance hall, there is no dance floor. This is basically for the artists to be able to come in and entertain our guests. One of the things that we're currently doing right now is we have a partnership with the Suffolk Center for Culture Arts. We have an event this June 30th where we're allowing artists to come in and perform, and what we're looking for is to have artists to audition at our location before we get them to the grand stage. So, once again, this is not a club, there is no dancing, we're not exceeding 11:00 PM hours, and we are limiting our entertainment to weekends only. But it is downtown Suffolk, and so individuals that are living and moving downtown, we're giving them something to be able to do, to say, hey, I'm excited to live downtown Suffolk, and that's what we are bringing. And so, I know there is some concern also in regards to Mr. Mark, his building. As you can see, what we have on the screen, right next to us, there is a building he owns that has stairs upstairs only, so there is no downstairs. For one, both buildings have been vacant for the past two years, all right? So, I don't know who we would be, you know, looking to cause any issues to, because it has been vacant for the past two years. But also, right next to us is stairs that goes to upstairs, and then next to that is where he has his other space that he owns, right? We also had conversations with Sushi Aka, the owner of Sushi Aka, and we've, we have a great relationship with him, and so we're just looking forward to add something to downtown Suffolk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epps. I'd like to close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions? Comments? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I think everyone knows where I stand on this issue, and this has nothing to do with Mr. Epps. It has something to do with the fact that this is a CUP, and if there is quote unquote any problems, because it's a CUP, we can address it. Looking at the applications, the application is consistent with everything else the city has brought forward to us, and we have approved in the past. So in light of that, Mr. Chairman, I move that CUP 2022-009 with the thirteen conditions are approved.
I second it.
Got a second from Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Discussion of the motion?
Mr. Chairman, real quick, Mr. Epps, can you come back to the podium, please? I just want to make sure you're getting your steps in for the day.
Hey, I appreciate it, yes, sir.
And not a problem. What is the fire-rated capacity of your establishment? Isn't it like in the low thirties?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five?
Yes, sir.
And then, you're called Wall Street, because, I mean, I remember reading an article, I guess in the paper one time, that you also do education, financial education for the local community?
Yes, yes, thank you for the promotional opportunity. So, yes, what we offer is business training on real estate, Forex and stocks, and Wall Street Cafe is basically a blend of the Wall Street in New York City, as well as Black Wall Street in the Greenwood District of Tulsa, Oklahoma. And so, we allow education, and through the arts is what we're looking to expand. So, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you for that.
Any other questions, discussion?
One other question, and it came up, I believe, from one of the opponents. I was talking about outside, all entertainment be, would be inside of the building.
That's correct.
Nothing on the outside.
That's correct. We would have to do a separate application for outside, and everything is inside. I do want to make a statement that there is no illegal or no drug activity, there is no smoking allowed on our premises, so I know one of the opponents says something about illegal drugs or drugs use and things like that, that is certainly not happening there. So I just want to make sure I said that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epps. Mr. Wyman, you call the, call the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creakmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Staylor?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Ms. Hayes and Mr. Epps, disagree with the council on 7/20/22 with a motion for approval. The missions, I'd like to call a ten-minute recess. I'd like to call the commission meeting back to order, and we will resume with our public hearings. The next item on our agenda is Conditional Use Request, CUP 2022-011, Suffolk Christian Academy. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. This is Conditional Use Permit Request, CUP 2022-011, Suffolk Christian Academy, submitted by Tamara Van Dorn, Suffolk Christian Academy applicant, on behalf of the First Baptist Church, property owner, in accordance with 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a school, secondary, on property located at 237 North Main Street, zoning map 34G18A, parcel 64, 65, and 66. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Suffolk Voting Borough Zone CBD, Central Business District, and HC, Historic Conservation Overlay District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Mixed Use Core Use District. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to Conditional Use Permit, CUP 2022-011. Once again, Staff Planner Erin Deers will present staff's report.
Thank you. The applicant, Suffolk Christian Academy, proposes to establish a school, secondary or middle, inclusive of the upper school only, grade six through 12 within First Baptist. The applicant is proposing to utilize only the spaces, only spaces in the basement and the upper two floors, or the first two floors. The upper school maintains the hours of 8:00 AM to 2:50 PM, educating students in core academic subjects, as well as extracurricular activities, such as sports, drama, and student government. Nope, sorry, I'm a little behind. The applicant has stated that drop-off and pickup will be at the rear parking lot behind the church, located on the parcel. Student drivers will park in the twenty spaces provided at the rear parking lot, thus eliminating the needs for students to cross Main Street. Staff will be utilizing the crosswalk with pedestrian button as they are parking in the lot across the street. The Conditional Use Permit recognizes that because of their unique characteristics or potential impacts on adjacent land uses, are not generally permitted in certain zoning districts as a matter of right. Rather, such uses are permitted through the condition, approval of a CUP when the right set of circumstances and conditions are found acceptable. Each of these conditions are addressed in staff's report. Staff finds the proposed use meets the criteria for Conditional Use Permit set forth in Section 31306 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of CUP 2022-011 with the five conditions as noted in staff's report and in the attached resolution. This concludes my presentation. I'll be standing by for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deers. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Commissioner and members of the Commission Board. My name is Tamara Van Dorn, I am the head of school at Suffolk Christian Academy. We appreciate your time on considering this Conditional Use Permit on behalf of Suffolk Christian Academy. As, the school has been around for over thirty-three years, and we would like the opportunity to return our upper school to its home of origin, which was Suffolk, First Baptist Church on 237 North Main Street, where we operated the school for twenty-six years in the past. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Van Dorn. Is there anyone else who speak in favor of this request? Hearing none. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Hearing none. I close the public hearing. Commissioners, question, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval of CUP 2022-011 with five conditions.
Motion for, Commissioner Staylor?
Second.
Second from Mr. Eberwine. Any discussion of motion?
The other one.
Creakmore. Creakmore, I'm sorry. Okay, I thought I had it set. Any discussion of motion? Mr. Wyman, you call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creakmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Staylor?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Ms. Van Dorn, this is, got approval from this body, and we'll go to City Council on 7/20 with a motion for approval. Thank you. The next item on our request is Conditional Use Request, CUP 2022-012, Blue Point Live Entertainment. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional Use Permit Request, CUP 2022-012, Blue Point Live Entertainment, submitted by David Dahlman, Kimberly Horn, agent, on behalf of Jerry Miller, Blue Point Investment Group, LLC. The applicant and property owner, in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a bar and nightclub on property located at 5941 Harborview Boulevard, zoning map 6*3, parcel 15. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Suffolk Voting Borough Zone B2, General Commercial, this is, I'm sorry, that's not the correct voting borough, my apologies, Zone B2, General Commercial, Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Core Support Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to Conditional Use Permit, CUP 2022-012. Staff Planner Brittany Collier will present staff's report.
Thank you. As stated, this CUP is to establish a bar and nightclub use, inclusive of live entertainment. The subject property is located within the Core Support Use District within the Northern Growth Area. Please be advised that subsequent to the delivery of staff's report last week, we did receive additional public comments, which have been placed in front of you and consolidated into a packet, and then also earlier today, we received an additional email, which has also been provided to you. The subject property is Zone B2, General Commercial District. To the north of the property is the Town Bank Member Services, Zone B2. To the south is the Hilton Garden Inn and various restaurant and retail uses, also Zone B2. To the east are Fields and Forested Lands, Zoned OI, Office Institutional, and to the west are Single Family Dwellings, Zone PD, Plan Development Overlay District. In 2020, a site plan was approved for the construction of a 12,145-square-foot multi-tenant retail and restaurant development known as Blue Point, to be located on the subject parcel. The purpose of this CUP request is specifically to authorize live entertainment, such as bands, DJs, music bingo, for the future restaurant and brewery. The future development of restaurant, retail, commercial building are uses that are permitted by right in the B2 zoning district and are not subject to this request. The live entertainment is proposed to take place primarily outside within a beer garden, however, it is also proposed to take place indoors occasionally during inclement weather. The proposed hours of operation for the live entertainment, both indoor and outdoor, are Sunday from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and Friday and Saturday, 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The requested hours of operation are within the range of hours of operation that have been approved for other live entertainment venues within the city of Suffolk. The detailed components of the outdoor beer garden will include cover areas for tables and chairs, fire pits, outdoor tasting services, and will be dog-friendly. The proposed restaurant and brewery will include a rooftop dining area. No live entertainment is proposed on the rooftop. It will also take place within the beer garden and indoors. The applicant stated that they intend for the live entertainment component of the business to be to be family friendly. They do not envision this as a typical nightclub atmosphere. A conditional use permit recognizes that because of their unique characteristics or potential impacts on adjacent land uses are not generally permitted in certain zoning district as a matter of right, rather such uses are permitted through the approval of a CUP when the right set of circumstances and conditions are found acceptable. I will touch base on a few of those, however, each one is outlined in Staff's Report. The subject property is located within, I'm sorry, the proposed conditional use shall conform to the character of the neighborhood within the same zoning district in which it is located. The subject property is located within an established commercial district along Harborview Boulevard, which is comprised of a variety of retail, restaurant, office, hotel, and entertainment oriented uses that are also zoned B two general commercial zoning district or O I Office Institutional. The proposed use is similar to other uses within the Harborview corridor. The proposed use shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of vibration, noise, odor, dust, smoke, or gas. The applicant is required to abide by city regulations pertaining to sound and noise control. The proposed location of the live entertainment is located as far forward on the parcel as possible from the nearest residential structure. Additionally, as shown on this slide, the applicant is proposing to place double stacked row of evergreen trees along the property lines that adjoin the residential homes to the west of the parcel in order to effectively screen the proposed use. The proposed hours of operations are limited and within the range of hours of operation that have been approved for other live entertainment venues within the city of Suffolk. The recommended conditions of approval should prevent live entertainment from becoming noxious or offensive to other properties. In addition to the previous exhibit, the applicant has provided a rendering showing the type of vegetation to be planted along the property lines that adjoin the residential uses. Staff did visit the site on June fourteenth and was able to verify that vegetation along the property lines that adjoin the residential uses has been installed. This slide shows some of the vegetation that has been installed along those property lines. In conclusion, when evaluating the proposed live entertainment use, the purpose of this CUP request is specifically to authorize the live entertainment such as bands, DJs, and music bingo for the future restaurant and brewery. The future development of the restaurant and retail commercial building are uses that are permitted by right in the B two zoning district and are not subject to this request. Therefore, Staff finds that the proposed use of a bar nightclub inclusive of live entertainment at fifty-nine forty-one Harborview Boulevard meets the criteria for a conditional use permit set forth in section thirty-one dash three zero six of the Unified Development Ordinance. Live entertainment is appropriate for this location within the existing B two general commercial zoning district when appropriate conditions are established to mitigate any negative impacts. And accordingly, Staff recommends approval of CUP twenty twenty-two dash zero one two with conditions as noted in the attached resolution and ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. My name is David Dahlman with Kimley Horn. My business address is forty-five twenty-five Main Street, Virginia Beach, Virginia. Here today on behalf of the Blue Point Investment Group for the live music that we're proposing as part of the conditional use permit. So, as we previously discussed by planning, and thank you planning for putting together the application, the brewery and restaurant are by right uses. As we got to talking with staff, we were discussing how important live music is to the environment that the brewery is wanting brewery slash restaurant is wanting to create. It's a family-friendly environment, background music, things that you can go there on a Saturday afternoon and enjoy. As we were talking to staff, then we realized that that live music component had a special requirement that we'd have to get the conditional use permit for. And that's what we're here today to do, is request that conditional use permit. So, we put together the application, and we've been coordinating with the homeowners association and the business association that governs that area. Through that, we've gotten feedback and positive and some comments that actually had us change the buffer that we have presented to you. So, I don't know if I can request things to be changed, if we can go back to previous slide, I'd love to point some things out. So, we received comments back from some of the homeowners, specifically the ones that are adjacent to the development. And their requests were for the buffer that you see on this screen to be enhanced some. And so, we took that into consideration and did that. So, they had other comments that were unrelated to the conditional use permit, but we focused on the comments that were just for the conditional use permit that we are requesting today. So, moving forward, the buffer we've enhanced by adding a six-foot privacy fence between there, and this will provide a physical and visual buffer. The trees also will provide more of the visual buffer. Those are going to be evergreen trees that in maturity will provide a very good visual buffer, will not be able to see onto the property. The trees that you saw planted in this slide here, well, nope, I'm going the wrong way. Sorry about that. These are trees that we put there temporarily. These are actually outside of the thirty-foot buffer, and they will, if we can leave them there, we will leave them there. But they're kind of a, we knew that when we did the initial work, that some trees got cleared through here, so we were planting that back for the time being. So, we believe we've addressed the comments that they have provided in terms of the buffer request. The only piece of that that we were not able to fully address was there was a request for a berm. We did look at this, and the lots that are the residential lots, they drain onto our property. So, if we were to put a berm, it would create a drainage issue and then a negative impact to their property. So, we have not proposed a berm at this time. So, with that, you know, we believe that we have heard their concerns, addressed their concerns. We are providing a quality project that's going to be something that the neighborhood is going to love and be able to use for years to come. And so, we are looking forward to hopefully gaining your recommendation to move forward to council. I'll stand by for questions.
So, is there any, excuse me, is there anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none. Is there anyone that's speaking in opposition?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and all the planning commission. I'm Bob Christie, and I'm a resident of Madison Place in the Riverfront at fifty-three twenty-one Sports Club Run. Thank you for giving us a chance to speak today. I would like all of our Harborview residents who are opposed to Blue Point and New Realm existing conditional use requests, and would like more information on Blue Point Development's plan in its entirety, which has not been presented to any of us, to please stand up. I come before you to address the conditional use permit presented by New Realm and Blue Point Development. I first heard of this New Realm when a press article was released the end of May of this year. My wife and I became more involved when we saw county signs posted at the end of Sports Club Run on or around June sixth, and gave us a deadline of being set for input by that Friday, June tenth. Information on this entire project has come out in dribs and drabs. It's almost like death by a thousand cuts. First, we heard another extended stay hotel was going to be built, and we thought it would be positioned on Harborview Boulevard, but then property was clear-cut backing up to Glenn Eagles Home. Then we see the brewery article in May. Then signs were placed across from the town bank along Harbor Point and Sports Club Run, but not anywhere near a cleared lot on Sports Club Run until one was moved down later this past, last week. The brewery artwork was first represented as a restaurant, but now it will be a nightclub. Noise is going to be a factor. The building is six thousand square foot with dining on the roof, but the beer garden and outdoor use area is over eight thousand square foot. I have questions in regards to the outdoor bar, the number of the people that can be talking at volumes above the music level and the live music level, noise pollution when backing up to a bedroom community, a hundred and sixty homes, not counting the retreat for over fifty-five citizens across Harborview, or Bickford, which is just being developed as an assisted living facility, are all going to be impacted by noise pollution. And by, because of Blue Point's clear-cutting large sections of the natural vegetation a couple years ago, noise from voices to a heavy amplified bass beat will travel. It is only by good buffering and setbacks can we reduce it. Some of the trees that were destroyed already would take ten to fifteen years to replace. We need better setbacks. We need a concrete, sound-absorbing wall, eight to ten feet, and earthen berms. We also need the natural buffers of twenty and thirty-foot trees that now grow to help act as noise and light buffers. And some of those trees still exist, but this is on their eighteen-acre overall complex. We also need Blue Point and the Miller Group to be more open in getting out complete information. In closing, why the concern about noise? A rock band can generate a hundred and ten decibels of music. Crowd noise adds to that. Comparison to give you, an accurate comparison, decibel levels is a jackhammer or a power saw creates the same noise level. A noisy brewery can be generating near that every evening or every day for many hours. This is coming at a much higher cost to our community. Loud noise impacts veterans who suffer from PTSD, children who are trying to study or sleep, or anyone else who's not voluntarily going to New Realm Brewery. We are rational individuals that are not against the commercial growth and endeavor, but this should be done in an open and honest atmosphere, and we should see the big plan for Blue Point. Not a five-day notice and no real understanding of what our new neighbors are planning. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Christie.
Yes.
Thank you. Does anyone else speak in opposition?
Hi. Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the planning committee. My name is Mary Buller, and I live on Sports Club Run, and I share a property line with Blue Point. I'm not fully opposed to the brewery either. However, I would like to work with the builder if possible. I do have legitimate concerns about the planned buffer. The buffer plan is addressed in your staff report under letter E of the conditional use permit approval criteria. It's also depicted on the page that's titled Blue Point Buffer Exhibit, which we've already seen. Several homeowners have received an email last week stating that this buffer and another proposed building are still under review. And because they're still under review, I would like to address this. This buffer is meant to serve as a sound and privacy barrier between the residents and the brewery. However, this buffer is a one-time thing to be built. So, it will not be reevaluated or revised after it's established as a barrier. And for this reason, I would like to pay special attention to the length of the proposed buffer, because this indicates it's also meant to serve as a sound and privacy barrier for any future building or concept that is constructed behind the brewery, such as a three-story hotel. It goes all the way from the back of the Hilton Garden Inn, past these homes, to my house here. The proposed buffer design includes a screening fence with a tree strip on the plan, and while that was very thoughtful and very much appreciated, I don't feel it's adequate to protect my home against noise and privacy. An eight-to-ten-foot soundproof wall might be more appropriate. All of the homes that border the property are raised with crawl spaces under them. So, for example, from my living room window on the first floor, my eyes are eight feet high from the ground. My husband is six foot five, and he can see from the very top of that window at ten feet off of the ground. So, again, this is from the first floor. So, according to the survey of my home, the proposed fence will be twenty-seven feet away from my living room, cutting inwards towards my backyard fence with a final distance of four-point-four feet away from my property. I will be able to see and hear over the top of that proposed six-foot fence from my living room and from my back deck, all the way from Sports Club Run to Harborview Boulevard, including a view of the brewery. The homes bordering the property are all two-story homes or taller, and will be exposed to sound coming from the brewery because the fence will not be tall enough to block it, and the trees will be too young to help. Once another building is built behind the brewery, people on the other side of the fence will be able to see in both first and second floor windows from the parking lot. Second and third story windows of a new building will be so close that second floor home windows will lack privacy. I sent in emails over the weekend with pictures of what my second and first floor windows look like, so you can see exactly that my home is actually the closest thing to the parking lot right here. I see where was I? I see this as a safety issue, because I have small children, and they deserve privacy from strangers. There's also going to be noise coming from vehicles back there, and proposed barrier, the proposed barrier, will not protect my home from that noise. Again, this is relevant to today's discussion, because in addition to being meant to serve as a sound and privacy barrier for the brewery, which is where we're starting with this, the length of the proposed barrier indicates it's also meant to be a barrier between homeowners and the development as a whole, including whatever is built after the brewery. And thank you for that. The buffer will only be built once. So, again, it's not likely to be reevaluated once it's completed or another building is added later. So, yes, it is relevant to today's discussion. Article six of the Development Ordinance's section thirty-one dash six-one-three requires a five-foot minimum easement to be provided for utility maintenance. The proposed fence will be four-point-four feet from my backyard fence, and this does not allow room for utility easements. The proposed buffer will impact my ability to sell my home in the next five years. A potential buyer will see a parking lot from the living room or second floor and decide it's not safe or quiet enough to live there. There will be a decline in my property values as a result. Letter E of the conditions specifically speak to this, and this is why the city or the developer has recommended a screening buffer, but I feel that this buffer is not adequate. Number eleven of your recommendations section of the staff report begins, and I quote, "At a minimum, a six-foot tall privacy fence." I would argue that this verbiage signals that more could be done. Letter B of the conditions quotes the UDO that addresses adverse effects on health, safety, or comfort of persons living in or working in or driving through the neighborhood. The staff comments for letter B state that the subject property is located within an established commercial district and that the staff conditions of approval ensure that the bar and nightclub will be compatible, incompatible use with the surrounding area. These comments make it sound as though the property is only surrounded by businesses and fails to include the adverse effects on surrounding residents which share the property lines with the development. UDO Article six, section thirty-one dash six-zero-two Design Standards are about maximizing the preservation of existing trees to provide for community, I'm sorry, continuity and improved buffering ability. There are natural trees on the property and on the property line between the existing homes and the development. Those trees are very tall, and they shield the homes that are close to the brewery from being seen from Harborview Boulevard, with the exception of the one house, which you can see here that the builder did go up and do this, but this is recent. That house that's on Harborview, can be seen, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, that house could be seen from Harborview Boulevard for two years, and the builder just put those in recently. So, that's kind of, that's something we wanted to address. There were natural trees there that could have served as part of the buffer, and they were tall, and it would have been nice. So, there are more trees just beyond that, behind the ones that have been planted that are between my home and that one. And I'm speaking of, this is where they were planted, the trees that are on there. This is where they were planted. Protect my home, but these guys do, and that natural vegetation that's there could actually add to the buffer that we're trying to talk about today from the brewery. So, UDO Article six, section thirty-one, six-zero-two labeled screening says, "The planting strips shall contain existing or proposed vegetation, berming, or an opaque wall, or a combination thereof. We are asking for a combination, for an eight-to-ten-foot sound barrier wall combined with berming and vegetation." There's also something I personally need help with you guys from and from the developer if possible. While measuring my yard and the location of the proposed fence, I discovered that the original homeowner installed a small portion of our sprinkler system about five to ten feet beyond my property line, and it's located on the Blue Point land. I need help. I need help from the city and permission from the developer to access this part of my sprinkler system and remedy the situation before this buffer is installed and before any digging starts. I have not been contacted yet by the developer, and I would like to hear from them. I am willing to work with anyone who is willing to help. And I do ask, would the buffer be installed before the brewery construction begins, or is, I'm not sure on that process how that happens. I kindly ask that you put yourself in my situation and that of my immediate neighbors. Again, I'm not opposed to the brewery or to any future building that's next to my home. In fact, I look forward to visiting the brewery, and if there is a hotel at some point in the future, I would love for my family to be able to stay nearby. But I do feel that whatever's planned really isn't adequate for my family's right to privacy and right to peace. Please keep the surrounding residents in mind while you review the details of this project, and thank you for your time.
We have a minute and a half left for the opposition. Is anyone else would like to speak? Can I see a show of hands? Come on up, sir.
Thank you, sir, and good afternoon. Minute and a half, so I'll try to be as brief as I can. My name is Herman. I'm a retired Colonel, United States Air Force. I was stationed at Joint Forces Command for many years right in this area, which is across from me from six-sixty-four. I've owned three homes in Harborview area, and I also am with them where I have a home now in Alpha Sports Club Run. I've been there for almost twenty years. I don't say that to tout how long I've been there, but just to say, hey, I'm not somebody that just moved in last month or last year. So, you know, I have a lot of credibility in terms of the community, seeing Harborview built and all of that. I just wanted to say, I too am not against the development, but my concern that I have seen over the years is the rise in crime. And our, our community, we talk about it all the time, and, and my concern is that with the increase in development, I was just wondering, it's more of a question to the council as, okay, well, how are we, with this new development, how are we going to deal with the increase in policing, the increase in fire, EMS, and all of that? What's the plan for the corresponding rise in that, if you're doubling, tripling the communities? I was listening earlier to the, to the Bob White Lane and, and the Shoulder Hills Road Plan, all of that, and we have one police station in Harborview, one fire, one EMS station, and they are busy as heck. Just kind of example of the types of crimes that we've seen, they're, they're using Harborview Boulevard as a Speedway now. I mean, at ten, eleven, twelve o'clock at night on the weekends, it's like a drag race. I've called the police several times and sat there and wait and talked with them, and they tell me about how stretched thin they are. So when I hear about this development, I'm like, well, how are we planning on dealing with that? People, two or three o'clock in the morning, going through the Sports Club Run housing area and the riverfront, checking doors, checking cars, and opening, trying to go in garages and trying to go in people's front doors, you know, hoping that something's open. So with this development, you know, it concerns me that you bring more of this in, and then, you know, how are we going to deal, Mike, again, it's more of a question and concern, what's the plan to deal with all of that? You know, in addition to the noise, and, and I guess the other two things I have is in addition to the proposal about the noise, is the traffic. And again, going back to the other situation with Shoulder Hills Road and Bob White, we're at the same situation with that increase in traffic, and how are we going to deal with that on Harborview Boulevard? Because it, with the other development that's at the circle at the other end, and then all the development that's going on the right, like you're going towards Seventeen, because, you know, that, it's a mess now. I mean, or will be, you know, once all of that starts, you know, and add in construction too. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for your service. Mr. Dolman, it's now your time to rebut or address the issues that was brought up to the best of your ability.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. So again, this, this is a conditional use permit for the live music component of it. And so, hearing, hearing a lot of the comments, a lot of those really still related back to the buffer and, and some other buffers that will be planned later on as the rest of the site develops. So along Sports Club Run, we did not show those buffers on this, this plan, because again, this, if I go back to the exhibit, we, we were focusing on the conditional use that is for the very corner of that property, which is, which is the little brown area there, the very corner in front of the hotel, that's where the, the live music would be outside. And so as we were looking at just this application, that's why we focused on just that buffer there. As the rest of the site develops, as a B-two zone property, other buffers are going to be placed around the rest of the property. And that's all going to be based on the zoning requirements and, and working with staff and so on and so forth. I would note that, you know, the location of the, the live music is as far away from the entire neighborhood as we can. It's a football field away from the, the nearest property line, residential, even further away from the, the residential actual structure. Sports Club Run, you're two or three football fields away from where the live music is going to be taking place. So it's, it's not that we are in their backyard by any, we are near their backyard, but we are not directly in their backyard. And so we have done what we believe is prudent and responsible as developers to make sure that we are, we are being mindful of the residential neighborhood that surrounds us. Touching on the crime just a little bit, a high-quality development really prohibits crime. If you do a high-quality development, that does not lend itself towards crime. Sure, you can't, no one, not one of us here can, you know, guarantee anything, but a high-quality development with the proper security systems, with the proper management, is going to not have crime. And we all know who this is, the brewery that's going in, it was announced, and they have a facility in Virginia Beach that does very well, very, very well-respected in the I do have the developer with me today. I'd ask if you guys have any other comments? We have been working, again, talking with the HOA directly, and the HOA is how we've been managing things back and forth. With that, any, open to any questions?
We have two minutes left. If the developer has any comments to...
Hi, my name is Mike Hopkins. I'm a resident of the Riverfront. I just want to say that...
I'm looking for the developer.
My name is Lori Miller, and I represent the developer. I'm here to answer any questions you have. I do know that one of the opponents did mention about the trees, and I did want to clarify that when we were meeting with planning prior to purchasing the property three years ago, four years ago, they requested that we leave all the trees intact if we could and for as long, and they clearly stated, "We know and recognize that you have the right to tear down the trees, but we just ask, be mindful of that and leave it if you don't have a user to take possession of that section." We have been happy to obligate, to, to satisfy that request. The one section that is down, I believe they mentioned it in this area and showed you photos, is down because of the approved site plan had some wetlands that we had to mitigate. At that time, we were doing the construction. So no trees have been taken down in an excessive manner than what was needed to meet the requirements of the planning. The other thing is, we had the original intent for this footprint and a user, we also had two other buyers for work on Blue Point, and then the pandemic hit. We could not control that people did not know what to do during that time. So the dormant nature is not what we had intended. We have, I have communicated with the HOA representative, because that is our general policy when dealing next to residential communities, it's best to facilitate the information to the person who is hired to manage it. I have received personal emails and phone calls, and I've let Toni know at UPA, and she reached out last fall about the landscape buffer. I had Kim Lee Horn design something that met Suffolk's requirements. I engaged with Coastal Landscape to install it. We hit one delay at some point because we weren't sure where it was, were we inside the buffer or out, and I hired the landscaper to install it. That's why it's taken so long. I've exceeded my time. I apologize. Oh, and the other thing about the conditional use is, the live music component has just come up recently. There was no intention of secrecy. There's never been an intention of secrecy with the Miller Group. As Toni has said, she relates questions to me as the homeowners take it to their board.
Thank you. We're now closed to public hearing. Commissioners, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question, I guess, for Ms. Collier or Mr. Wine, whichever one. Wait, don't, Ms. Collier, this is just for my clarification. If we vote to deny the CUP, will it stop the brewery from being built at all?
I mean, the brewery is by right. Now, whether or not they want to continue and establish that brewery after the CUP is denied is up to them.
Yeah, but I made sure, so, so if we deny the live entertainment, it does not stop the actual brewery, the physical building, from being built if they decide to go forward?
Correct.
The live entertainment is the only thing that this CUP is addressing.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion for approval, CUP two-zero-two-two-dash-zero-one-two.
Motion for approval.
Yeah, motion for approval.
Everwine?
Yes. Mr. Chairman.
With conditions.
Say again?
With conditions.
With the condition, okay.
Yes, a second.
Then got a second from Commissioner Edwards. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Wine, you call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Everwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richter?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Chairman Singleton, rather.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the vote is, or the motion's approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Mrs. Dolman, you can, I missed the young lady's name, but you have this body's approval, and we'll go to City Council on seven-twenty-twenty-two. Okay, moving along. The next item on our agenda is Condition Use Request, CUP twenty-twenty-two-dash-zero-one-three, Telecommunication Fiber Optics Pop Site. Mr. Wine?
Yes, sir. This is Conditional Use Permit Request, CUP twenty-twenty-two-zero-one-three, Telecommunication Fiber Optics Point of Presence Site, submitted by Warren Williams of Hurt and Profit Agent on behalf of William Hume Shenandoah Cable Television LLC, applicant on behalf of Economic Development Authority, property owner, in accordance with Sections Thirty-One-three-oh-six and Thirty-One-four-oh-six of the Unified Development Ordinance. To grant a Conditional Use Permit to establish a utility facility not otherwise enumerated on property located at One Thirty-Five Hall Avenue, zoning map thirty-four G twenty-four three parcel A. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Whaleyville Voting Borough, Zoned FRRD Fairgrounds Revitalization and Redevelopment Zoning District. The twenty-thirty-five Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area, Core Support Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to Conditional Use Permit Request, CUP twenty-twenty-two-zero-one-three. Staff Planner Aaron Deers will present staff's report.
Thank you. The applicant is proposing to lease an eighteen-by-forty-five-foot compound, which equates to nine existing parking spaces from the Economic Development Authority. Additionally, they will have one space for employee parking for a total of ten spaces. As the applicant has stated, no full-time employees will be present after construction, only routine maintenance will be needed once or twice monthly. Therefore, one space is sufficient to fulfill their parking needs. All proposed equipment shelters placed within the compound will match in design as seen above. In addition, the proposed shelter will be brick to complement the existing main brick Initially, the compound will include a fourteen-by-twenty-four-foot equipment shelter to house the fiber optic equipment to be surrounded by a protective row of bollards, utilize and utilizing the existing Enkap Island's two trees for screening from the roadway to the west. A diesel backup generator will also be located within the compound, which will run a weekly test every Tuesday at nine AM that is to be no louder than a single-family residence HVAC unit. A Conditional Use Permit recognizes that because of their unique characteristics or potential impacts on adjacent land uses, they are not generally permitted in certain zoning districts as a matter of right. Rather, such uses are permitted through the approval of a CUP. When the right set of circumstances and conditions are found acceptable, each of these conditions are noted and are addressed in staff's report. Staff finds the proposed use meets the criteria of Conditional Use Permit set forth in Section Thirty-One-dash-three-oh-six of the Unified Development Ordinance. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of CUP twenty-twenty-two-dash-zero-one-three with the three conditions as noted in staff's report and in the attached resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deers. We're now open to public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
My name is Chris Kyle. I'm a Vice President at Shintel, at Shenandoah Cable Television. It's good to be back in Suffolk. Last year, we were here for a data franchise. What this building is designed to do is to connect all the fibers we're going to pull here in the city of Suffolk that will offer residential and business internet. So fiber to the home is the most advanced technology consumers and businesses can get today. That's what this business is, will support. It's an important step, follow-on, to what we're doing here in Suffolk. Not only is it the best technology for internet, for consumer and business internet, but it will give people choice for their providers, and we heard that loud and clear. So I'm here in support of this. I thought that was a good overview and here to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
And I am Biff Johnson with Hurt and Profit, Warren Williams, from our office, submitted on behalf of Shintel. I'm just here to answer any questions that may come up from the civil construction aspect.
That's it? Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none? Is there anyone here to speak up in opposition to this request? Hearing none? We're closed to public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, only thing I'd like to say, as a former member of the EDA, I'm glad that some of our property is being put to use.
That's as far as you're going with that favor?
No, I'll make the motion that, I, let me get the information. The motion to approve CUP twenty-twenty-two-dash-o-one-three with conditions.
Everwines are going to give us a second.
Second.
Okay. Questions of the motion?
I'm just trying to make sure I understand. This is going to be in the parking lot?
Yes.
Parking lot of the Health and Human Services?
All right, back in the back.
I have a question for Mr. Todd, for maybe the young man standing up here. You keep mentioning fiber.
Yes, sir.
And how are you going to get the fiber there?
So we have two types of, what we call fiber is our long haul network, and we'll go from eastern to Virginia Beach, and then we'll go westerly toward Windsor, and we'll, we'll have a complete diverse route to this facility. Our second piece of the fiber is from this facility out to the actual neighborhoods and the consumers and the customers within Suffolk. So this is a fiber-based network that has typically strictly been used for businesses, but now an opportunity for basic residential people to use.
So in essence, you've got to run underground conduits to run your fiber cable into these neighborhoods?
Yes, sir. It'll be aerial and buried.
Oh, aerial.
There'll be some arrow, yes, sir.
So you're doing, that's solar, not solar... So you're doing, that's solar, not solar, microwave then?
No microwave, no microwave. This is all completely encapsulated. There's no signals, there's nothing coming. Only thing we may pick up there may be some local channels that a basic customer in Suffolk would be picking up, so that's all we would be doing. It's all encapsulated into fiber, no signals coming out of it.
Thank you, sir. Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Wine?
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion's approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, Mr. Todd, Mrs. Johnson, and the young man, this will go to City Council, I think, January, I think, July 20th? Okay. Next item now, we have a few exception requests. The first ones are going to be CEX 2022-0052667 River Watch Drive. Mr. Wine?
Yes, sir. This is exception request CEX 2022-0052667 River Watch Drive, submitted by Linus Taylor, applicant and property owner, on behalf of Barry Taylor, property owner, in accordance with Section 31415 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant an exception to the development criteria and buffer area requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area to permit the installation of a fence to encroach into the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer on property located at 2667 River Watch Drive, zoning map 26F*RB, parcel 43. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Chucka Tuck Voting Borough, zoned RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area, Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution for a Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Exception Request for property located at 2667 River Watch Drive, CEX 2022-005. Staff Planner Brittany Collier will present staff's report.
Thank you. As stated, this exception request is to allow for the encroachment of a fence within the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer for property located at 2667 River Watch Drive. The 1,700-square-foot parcel is zoned PD, Plan Development Overlay District, and is a part of Phase 1 of the River Bluff subdivision, which was platted in 2011. There are tidal wetlands present at the rear of the subject property that are contiguous to the Nansman River, which has a 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer. The current single-family home was constructed in 2021 and is located outside of the 100-foot buffer. The applicant is proposing to encroach within the buffer for the construction of a 200-linear foot aluminum fence, of which 128 feet would be located within the 50-foot landward portion of the buffer. No impacts to the 50-foot seaward portion of the buffer are proposed, and the fence would be placed within a maintained grassed area. No vegetation is proposed to be removed as a part of this request. To mitigate for the 34 square feet of disturbance for fence posts, the applicant has submitted a buffer mitigation plan, which depicts one unit of vegetation to offset the impacts of the new impervious cover. The vegetation proposed is consistent with the Riparian Buffer Modification and Mitigation Manual. The proposed fence will be installed in areas outside of the buffer where able, and will be installed in a manner that does not alter or inhibit surface flow. Staff finds that the applicant's request does satisfy the criteria outlined in Section 31415 subsection F5C of the UDO to grant an exception to the requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions of exception request CEX 2022-005. I'm available to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. And now we'll open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Barry Taylor, the property owner of 2667 River Watch Drive, new resident to the area, new home just built. We are requesting this fence primarily because I'm a young father, I have two small children, and both of my neighbors, the one to the left has already erected their fence, thank God, but both of my neighbors keep small dogs that are very aggressive, and my small children love to play in the backyard. And if you notice from the pictures, the bottom portion of the aluminum fence has a little extra posting in it to keep those dogs in their yard while my children play in ours. Also, about 50 feet beyond the back of our house, there's an embankment. They did some backfilling in order to level the land when they built the house, so the embankment is a pretty steep slope, and I would like to keep my children off of that embankment. So we're proposing to bring that fence probably about 10 feet away from that hill towards our backyard area, just to give us a nice place to have the children go out and play on a Sunday or sunny afternoon. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Is anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none. Is anyone to speak in opposition? Not hearing any. We'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I've been converted, so I I move for the approval of CEX 2022-005 with conditions.
Second the motion.
Commissioner Edwards and Mr. Staler, okay. Any discussion on the motion?
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Before I vote, I just want to say it's always wonderful to see a miracle happen right there in front of me, but yes.
And Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wine. Mr. Taylor, you can wreck your fence, you got the, you got the approval, no additional action is required. The next item on our agenda is an exception request CEX 2022-0065261 River Club Drive. Mr. Wine?
Yes, sir. Exceptional request CEX 2022-0065261 River Club Drive, submitted by Mary Chambers, applicant and property owner, on behalf of Michael Chambers, property owner, in accordance with Section 31415 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant an exception to the development criteria and buffer area requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area to permit the installation of a fence to encroach into the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer on property located at 5261 River Club Drive, zoning map 6DRF*1*A, parcel 31. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Nansman Voting Borough, zoned PD, Plan Development Overlay District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area, Core Support Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution for a Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Exception Request for property located at 5261 River Club Drive, CEX 2022-006. Staff Planner Amy Bukikia will present staff's report.
Good afternoon. As stated, this is an exception request to allow for a fence to encroach within the 50-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer at 5261 River Club Drive. The about 1-1/2-acre property is zoned PD, Plan Development Overlay District, and is part of the Harborview subdivision, which was approved with only a 50-foot RPA buffer rather than a 100-foot buffer back in 1999. The current single-family home was constructed in 2001, and it is located outside of the buffer. The applicant is proposing to encroach within the buffer for about 150 linear feet of fencing. There are no impacts proposed to wetlands or clearing of trees, and the fence would be placed within a maintained grassed area. To mitigate for the land disturbance for the fence posts, the applicant has submitted a buffer mitigation plan, which depicts one unit of replacement vegetation to offset their impacts. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions of exception request CEX 2022-6. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amy. I was going to try Bukikio. I'd like to open the public, I'd like to open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Chairman. Mike Chambers, I'm the property owner and council. Thank you for hearing. We'd just like to put a fence up. We have two large German shepherds, and they like to chase deer through our neighborhood, and even though they're trained, they can't stop doing it, and that was the reason for us putting up our fence. Do you have any questions right offhand?
I don't think not, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, as Ernie Bink said, let's play two. And with that, I would like to move for the approval of CEX 2022-006 with conditions.
Second.
Great boy. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Wine?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Mr. Chambers, you got approval, put your fish, fence up, okay? Thank you. The next item is another exception request CEX 2022-0072603 South Nansman Drive. Mr. Wine, you read the caption, please.
Yes, sir. This is exception request CEX 2022-0072603 South Nansman Drive, submitted by Grant Etheridge, applicant and property owner, on behalf of Tammy Etheridge, property owner, in accordance with Section 31415 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant an exception to the development criteria and buffer area requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area to permit the installation of a fence to encroach into the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer on property located at 2603 South Nansman Drive, zoning map 11A, parcel 82. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Sleepy Hole Voting Borough, zoned RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as a part of the Northern Growth Area, Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution for a Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Exception for property located at 2603 South Nansman Drive, CEX 2022-007. Staff Planner Brittany Collier will present staff's report.
Thank you. This exception request is to permit a fence to encroach within the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer for property located at 2603 South Nansman Drive. The 2.29-acre property is zoned RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District. The subject parcel was platted in 1995, and the current single-family home was constructed in 2010 and is located outside of the 100-foot RPA Buffer. There are tidal wetlands present at the rear of the property that are connected to and contiguous to the tidal waters of the Nansman River, which has a 100-foot RPA Buffer. The applicant is proposing to encroach within the buffer for the installation of 203 linear feet of black aluminum fencing with the 50-foot landward and 50-foot seaward portion of the 100-foot RPA Buffer to enclose the existing pool within the rear yard. There are no impacts to the wetlands located on the property, and the fence would be placed within a maintained grassed area, and no vegetation is proposed to be removed as a part of this request. To mitigate for the 39 square feet of disturbance for fence posts, the applicant has submitted a buffer mitigation plan, which depicts one unit of vegetation to offset the impacts of the new impervious cover. The vegetation proposed is consistent with the Riparian Buffer Modification and Mitigation Manual. The proposed fence will be installed in areas outside of the buffer where able, and will be installed in a manner that does not alter or inhibit surface flow. Staff finds that the applicant's request does satisfy the criteria outlined in Section 31415 subsection F5C of the UDO to grant an exception to the requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions of exception request CEX 2022-007, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. I'd like to open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Mr. Chairman and Vice Chairman, members of Plating Commission, I also want to thank Grace that I worked with, and to the staff, and my good friend, Mr. Scott Overton, who helped me with paperwork to fill out and walked me through the process. I apologize for the sunglasses. I just had eye surgery recently, and I promise you, I'm not trying to hide anything, okay? We just installed a pool, and code requires a fence, and so we're requesting this so we can secure our backyard.
Your name and address, please.
Grant Etheridge, 2603 South Nansman Drive.
Thank you, Ms. Etheridge.
Okay.
Is anyone else speak in favor of this request? Hearing none. Is anyone speak in opposition? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments?
I'd like to give Mr. Edwards the go again.
Go for three.
Fear pressure, kids, don't succumb to fear pressure. Mr. Chairman, I call for, I make a motion for the approval of CEX 2022-007 with necessary conditions.
Second.
Now discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Wine, you call the vote.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Congratulations, Ms. Etheridge. You can put your fence up, no other actions required. The next item on our agenda is exception request CEX 2022-0085601 River Bluff Drive.
Yes, sir. This is exception request CEX 2022-0085601 River Bluff Drive, submitted by Carmen Wilson, applicant and property owner, on behalf of James Wilson, property owner, in accordance with Section 31415 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant an exception to the development criteria and buffer area requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area to permit the installation of a fence to encroach into the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer on property located at 5601 River Bluff Drive, zoning map 12C*, parcel A*, Y* AY*, C. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Sleepy Hole Voting Borough, zoned RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area, Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution for a Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Exception for property located at 5601 River Bluff Drive, CEX 2022-008. Once again, Staff Planner Amy Bukikia will present staff's report.
Good afternoon. As stated, this is an exception request to allow for a fence to encroach within the 100-foot Buffer for property located at 5601 River Bluff Drive. The property is about 1.6 acres in size. It's currently zoned RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning. The property was platted back in 1962 before the Bay Act came into play, and the current single-family home was constructed in 1968. The applicant is proposing to encroach within the buffer for about 230 linear feet of fencing. There are no impacts proposed to wetlands, and the fence would be in an area with an existing maintained grass backyard. To mitigate for the land disturbance associated with the fence posts, the applicant has submitted a buffer mitigation plan has submitted a buffer mitigation plan and includes one unit of replacement vegetation. Therefore, staff recommends approval of exception request, C E X twenty twenty-two dash eight with conditions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bo Kiki. Oh. I get it. I'd like to open the public hearing for this item. Who would like to speak in favor of this? Is anyone here for the C E X twenty twenty-two zero zero eight? Mr. James Wilson? Okay. Is anyone here and speaking in opposition? Like to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, we're making a clean sweep grand slam. I move for the approval of C E X twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight with conditions.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Creekmore. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Wine, you call the roll, please.
Yes. Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Everwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Staler.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector.
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the vote is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. So the Wilson family have approval of this from this body and no city council actions required. Next item on our public hearing is an ordinance text amendment and Mr. Wine has a device in his hand, I think. OTA twenty twenty-two zero zero two minor subdivisions.
Yes, sir. This is ordinance text amendment OTA twenty twenty-two zero zero two minor subdivisions initiated by the City of Suffolk for amendments to the Code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter thirty-one, Unified Development Ordinance, Article five subdivision, section thirty-one five oh six A two A minor subdivisions, Appendix A definitions and Appendix B submission requirements, B nine final plats or site plans. The purpose of this text amendment is to update and refine the Code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter thirty-one Unified Development Ordinance due to a change in circumstance. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to city council relating to ordinance text amendment OTA twenty twenty-two zero zero two. I'll be presenting you a brief overview of this ordinance text amendment. We've talked about it at the committee on ordinances and essentially what this ordinance text amendment is, is a clarification of our current language. It's not changing how the city operates. The guidance we've received on how it relates to our current ordinance will not change, but what we are, what we're aiming to do with this ordinance text amendment is to eliminate any potential misinterpretation of our current code moving forward. So with that being said, I'll provide you just a brief overview currently of our minor subdivision requirements and this relates to, the assumption here is that you're zoned agricultural or rural residential, but we primarily see minor subdivisions in our agricultural zoning district and these are kind of our minimum standard. You must have a hundred and fifty feet of road frontage. You must be at least one acre in size and no more than three cuts plus a residue for each parent track are allowed since March first nineteen seventy. And that applicable date, March first nineteen seventy, relates to the parent track in the dimensions in which it existed at that time. Minor subdivisions are approved by the director through administrative process. So in practice, this, these lots are a little larger than your standard one acre that we see, but you see, we have a parent tract here and they yield one, two, three and a residue. So this is the minor subdivision process when it yields three cuts plus the residue. So an issue that we've encountered is that re-subdivisions have resulted, mind you, a re-subdivision is, does not result in a new lot. It does not create a lot. It modifies the property lines of existing lots. So no new parcels created. However, re-subdivisions of property had been modifying the size of the parent tract so they could relocate new parcels outside of the parent tract as it existed in March first nineteen seventy. So once again, parent tracks are tied to the date of applicability of our subdivision ordinance, which is March first nineteen seventy. New parcels need to be located within the boundaries of the parent tract as it existed on that date. So previous direction given under, the previous planning director led to approval of some plats that may not have lined with this language, certainly cuts that were located on a different parent tract than what existed during that date of applicability. Just vibrated at me. All right, here we go. So we, we believe this is an opportunity for some clarification and what this language will do is three separate things. It would clarify that subdivision cuts are limited to a parent tract as it existed on March first nineteen seventy. Once again, that's the case today. This language doesn't change that, but we will take an opportunity to define parent tract in Appendix B of our Unified Development Ordinance. Additionally, and secondly here, the existing language in this code section could benefit, can benefit from clarity to reinforce the intent of the minor subdivision review and approval process. So it adds language to section thirty-one five oh six stating that cuts must be located within a parent tract as it existed on March first nineteen seventy. Once again, that's the case and it reads that way today. We're just clarifying. Lastly, we will require a full title report for minor subdivisions as a submittal requirement for minor subdivision applications. And this is a slight modification to Appendix B nine of our submission requirements. So here's the definition for parent tract, a lot, parcel, or track of land legally established prior to March first nineteen seventy, of which a plat or legal description is recorded in the circuit clerk's office. So that's the definition and the modification to Appendix B. Those things mad at me. I'm too far away. So secondly, we are making a modification to five oh six B two of our Unified Development Ordinance, which covers minor subdivisions. And a new lot created in accordance with this ordinance must be located on the physical boundaries of their associated parent tract as it existed on March first nineteen seventy. Once again, this is just a point of clarification and changes nothing from how the city will approve minor subdivision plats moving forward. And lastly, this is a modification to Appendix B of our Unified Development Ordinance, which covers submittal requirements. And this language is very close to what is required for a family transfer plats now. And in all honesty, it's information that developers, should they pursue property or have property under contract, will acquire during their due diligence period prior to going through the minor subdivision process. But what this language states is that for minor subdivision plats, as outlined in the applicable section of this ordinance, the applicant shall submit a title report prepared by a title examiner verifying the ownership and, this is the most important part, the subdivision history of the parcel being subdivided, including the parent tract. And this will really help developers and staff alike in processing these applications because we're planners, we're not title examiners, and we certainly find ourselves consuming a lot of time doing this research on final, on minor subdivision plats. It's very time consuming and it's something that most developers will have on hand anyway as they move forward with a division of property, particularly in the agricultural zoning district. So we think that's a win-win for both the development community and city staff. So staff is obviously recommending approval of this ordinance text amendment. It comes with a recommendation of approval from the committee on ordinances as well.
I'd like to open the public hearing for the ordinance text amendment OTA twenty twenty-two dash zero zero two minor subdivision. Is anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Raise your hand, sir.
He's in opposition.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Hearing none. Is anyone here in opposition?
Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of Planning Commission, my name is Jesse Johnson. I'm an attorney in this city. Have been practicing here for a little over forty-eight years now. Address is thirty-five oh eight Robbs Drive in Suffolk. I've been asked to appear before you to speak in opposition regarding the ordinance changes. A couple of things that there is really no objection to would be the practice that the attorneys who handle these minor subdivision requests, we typically do, and that is we give a full title opinion. And, and we do let in the title letter, which is a certificate from our office typically. We, we do the research through the assessors office. We do the research in the examiners, in the clerk's office, and we generally put in a sentence that says the property's not been subdivided at all since March one nineteen seventy, or maybe there's been a lot or two carved out. We include that information and, and that's reasonable. The, the problem that we have is this language is a little more insidious than you might think based on the presentation by the planning director. And we've had discussions about this in the past. And a little history, I think, is very important here. The planning department has approved minor subdivisions for at least the last seven years, allowing a re-subdivision of the residue tract. If you read the old code, it says a tract of land may be subdivided. It doesn't say the tract of land can't be a part of the parent tract. So the planning department for all those years has said, that's okay. You can do that. The net effect is the landowner may get a couple more lots that way. So that's what I think the city is objecting to, that they want you to stick to the three lots and the residue and you can't count the residue since the residue parcel retains the original parent tract tax number. They don't want you to touch that. Well, people have been doing it at least for seven years and it's been approved. I can cite you two cases where the planning department has denied two plats for the reasons stated here under the old language in the code. So I've got, I represent a person who submitted two of these plats this way. They were denied based on the interpretation. Now the city comes to you and says, okay, well let's fix it. Let's fix it after we've already decided that we're going to use the old code and fix it anyway. Not quite the way we would hope it would go. There are various considerations here and I do represent a number of farmers who have voiced to me that they're violently opposed to this particular change because it has ramifications to them. I don't know about you guys, but I can tell you, I grew up in Chalkettuck in a farming community and farmers relied on the ability to sustain their farms and being able to have reasonable opportunities to sell property. I can remember when there was no, there were bad crop years. How are we going to pay our bills? Well, we're going to sell a lot. We need some new equipment. How are we going to buy that and, and, and not hawk the family farm? Well, we could sell a lot. And we think that this infringes greatly on that farmer or landowner's right to, to, to use the property in a consistent way, and that is to do these subdivisions that do sometimes impact the residue. I would ask you to take a look at the data and the planning department has this data. If this is really a huge problem, then the data doesn't show it because at the work session a couple of months ago, I guess, when this thing came before, when, when something like this came before city council, the data indicates that the minor subdivision applications are way down for the, at least the last two years. So my thought is perhaps this is a tempest in a teapot, that we, we should perhaps change some language, but don't change it to, to the point where people who work with this day in and day out, year in and year out, as farmers, landowners, et cetera, they, they have a way of doing things and they've always been approved. Now, all of a sudden, they're not approved anymore. We understand it may be a legislative function, but we think it's a legislative function that may be misguided. We'd ask you to take a hard look at it and not recommend this for approval to city council. In fact, you may want, if, if you would so desire, to take a harder look at it and, and perhaps table this to get more facts. It's, it's not just a text amendment. It has some very serious ramifications in the rural communities. We don't believe that it is a situation where we're contributing to Holland becoming a metropolis. You know, you don't have that problem out there. If you got a couple more lots, you don't have that problem. The people that live out there, that moved out there, that want to gripe about living in the country, well, what are they doing? They get mad because they get behind a combine. They can't get to work and there shouldn't be so many people out on the roads. Well, where they came from, perhaps, they got behind a bus and, and couldn't get to work anyway. So there are certain trade-offs that you make when you move to a rural community, but we think you're impacting the farmers and the landowners adversely. And I think Mr. Taylor's here, who's a surveyor, and he can probably give you some, some, some more technical information with regard to this better than I can, but I just wanted to give you an overview and let us know that the farming, that a lot of people in the farming community that don't like this. We believe there are plenty of ways that we can design minor subdivisions where they impact farming much less. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Good afternoon. I'm Garland Taylor. Work for Courtney and Associates. We're a local survey firm here in Suffolk. Just wanted to state that this would have a great effect on our business, as well as lawyers and some farmers that are into development as well. And we've been doing this for a long time. The economy lately has been very good for everybody. And I've never staked out so many houses in my life the past two years, but that's not going to stay like that forever. And if y'all put a clamp on the subdivision capabilities, when the economy slows down, it's really going to be hard on us. So I would like for y'all to reconsider and, and study this a whole lot more than what you have. I'd like to have some clarification on how this is gonna affect when we do a three lot sub and have a residue and you have an adjoining parcel that's in the rear of this parcel that is determined that it has been a parcel for years before nineteen seventy. that is determined that it has been a parcel for years before 1970, and you add the residue parcel to this piece to create road frontage. Is this what you're trying to do, is to keep that from happening, to be able to cut three lots and a residue out of that then?
You're not going to answer any questions at this time, Mr. Taylor?
Okay. All right, I have no more to say.
Mr. Taylor?
All right.
Anyone else?
I'm Thomas Moore, and I reside at 133 Robin Lane. And there was builders that I've represented that could not be here today because they're out working, trying to make a living, just like farmers out there spraying and disking, and they're trying to make a living. And I'm here to say that I think this affects the farmers more than it'll affect me as a real estate agent. And a farmer doesn't have a good year every year. Sometimes there are years when they're bad years in farming. And a farmer typically, in my experience of settling here for 45 years, they can survive one year. But if you have two years in a row where a farmer has bad crops and a bad year, then that farmer may need to sell a lot. And if you're taking away his rights to subdivide his property, then that's wrong. Because I'd rather see a farmer continue to farm, sell a lot, whether it's a two-acre lot or a 10-acre lot, than he can keep going instead of having to see a farmer file bankruptcy. I've been subdividing farms for a long time. I've been noted for that. And I will tell you, every time that I subdivide a farm, I try to do it in the proper manner to keep some of that land in farm use, in land use tax. And that's always been my goal, is to cut these farms up in an expeditious manner, in a timely, in the right manner. And just like myself as a realtor, he makes a living surveying. A farmer makes a living by farmer. Don't put us out of business, and especially the farmer, do not put him out of business.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I'd like to close the public hearing. Questions, comments, motion, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, Kevin, do you mind speaking to the surveyor's question about the landlocked parcel behind one that has been subdivided in this manner and making a boundary line adjustment or whatever to bring that back lot, give it some road frontage, and then how that is, how that affects its divisibility?
Yeah, certainly. Nothing, first of all, I want to circle back to this language in general. We're not, the only thing that's really new about it is the title report, the full-blown title report. The rest of it, points of clarification, nothing will prohibit a developer or a property owner from doing a boundary line adjustment or resubdivision or property line vacation. And they can still do that. Whether they can cut onto another portion of property that's associated with another parent tract is a different question, and we'd have to research that a little further. But nothing will prohibit folks from combining property. It's regulated by the Code of Virginia and will still be regulated by the Code of Virginia.
Mr. Johnson, do you mind coming back up to the podium, please? This is as much of an observation as it is anything. We've got the planning department that is just simply making, I mean, it's a one-text change where they're defining a parent tract and then also saying that the divisions must be located within the original parent tract. The city's claiming that's not really making much of a change, it's just clarifying a few points. However, in listening to you and Mr. Moore and the fellow from Courtney &amp; Associates, we're bringing the world to an end. To exaggerate a little bit, can you go over again specifically what it is in this wording that is causing you y'all so much consternation?
It's the, if we look at B under 31506, B, little b, 2, capital B, it states that new lots, in accordance with this ordinance, must be located within the physical boundaries of their associated parent tract as it existed on March 1, 1970. Now, that is one of the changes. It's not just a textual change because what the Planning Commission has allowed for the last, or what the planning department has allowed for at least the last seven years, is that you've got three lots, okay? Lot, and let's use this as an example. Let's say the parent tract was 39-Star 1. Well, you've got 39-Star 1A, 39-Star 1B, 39-Star 1C, but the residue remained 39-Star 1. Now, the language in here, in the minor subdivision, says a parcel may be subdivided. So, what happened was you could attach, by boundary line adjustment, other property to 39-Star 1 because it was a tract, and that's the way it was interpreted. So, you might be able to get another cut or so out of that residue parcel. And that was, that for, as I say, for at least seven years, that was the way planning department construed this language. And that's what everybody has done. And again, I think the data is very much important here because leaving it like it is, now, the planning department may well say, "Well, we're not going to leave it like it is. We're going to interpret it another way." Well, if they were just going to interpret it, I'd guess they wouldn't be here with a text change on this ordinance. Obviously, they feel like they need some buttressing, or they wouldn't be here with this ordinance. So, we ask you to take a look at the data, see how many of these minor subdivisions are created, how many have been created since 2017, how many have been created from 2019 through 2020 through 2021. You will see a decline. Again, this is a tempest in a teapot by changing this because all it does is buttress the position that they've decided to take now with no notice, other than just say, "Boom, this is it. This is what we're going to do."
So, this, evidence that this must took place in Whalerville, on Whalerville Boulevard, they subdivided three, and there was another parcel. And I was wondering, how did they get four houses on that? I didn't understand it, but now I understand how they got the fourth house out of there.
Well, what you get is you can get four houses because you get three lots and the residue. So, you could have four buildable lots. But if you have property that adjoins that residue, and you don't use that residue as a lot, but you add property to it by boundary line adjustment, you might pick up some road frontage, and you might be able to get another couple lots. That's all.
The residue may not be big enough to put, to be a lot so you can add, you could pull eps from elsewhere.
Well, if the residue isn't big enough, you might be able to do it that way. Typically, the surveyors go to great pains to make sure that these residues are larger. And a lot of people who are reasonable with how they subdivide the property, a lot of times, if you have sufficient acreage, they leave the residues large. So, you can still farm. They, for instance, timbering is a farming operation, and sometimes you have to leave large tracts of land to be able to timber them. I mean, and it takes, what, 15, 20 years to get a good stand to timber? So, but in the meantime, you've got the farmer there who wants to stay in business, and it is a valid point. We don't think there's anything wrong with the old interpretation. We think, we, quite frankly, we think this is politically driven. We don't think it has anything to do with a text change, quite frankly. Because we hear all the time, "Oh, there's too much activity out in the rural communities." Well, people do like to live out there. And if you look at the data, you will see there are not that many homes being built out in the rural communities. If you look at the tax dollars that come into this city as a result of that building, and you decide to turn that spigot off, you go to see a dip. When people are investing $400,000 and $500,000 to move into a home in the rural areas, that's significant. Figure the tax on that. It's not taxed land use, it's taxed fair market value. If you use, what, a dollar or so, a dollar five, a dollar 10 per hundred, look what that brings into the city. The people that live out there are contributing. The farmers would like to continue to stay in business. We think it's a win-win, and it really doesn't create these problems. And I know Mr. Wine, he and I have talked about it, and we respectfully disagree with each other as to the effect of this, but it's simply more than just a text change. We, I would encourage you to take a hard look at it before you vote on it. I think it would behoove you to do that and just see how big the problem really is because I think you'll find the data will show it's minuscule.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. I appreciate that very much. Mr. Chairman, even though I'm head of the Committee on Ordinances, and obviously this came out of our committee based in the packet with a recommendation for approval by this body of 4-0, after hearing this, I would like to explore this a little more. So, is it appropriate to send it back to the Committee on Ordinances for review? There's no, there's no reason why we can't. In that case, I'd like to make a motion that this be tabled and sent back to the Committee on Ordinances for review, and maybe that'll give us some opportunity to seek some more clarification because I don't think any of us up here want to, you know, would do anything to deliberately hurt the rural community. I think we've recognized, perhaps, there have been times in the past that some of these ordinances and whatnot may have perhaps been abused, and sometimes there is need for clarification of some language to tighten up, you know, some of the potential gray areas in an ordinance. But if we're going to do something like this, and I think we talked about this at the meeting, that it doesn't come up too terribly often, but, you know, when it comes up, it needs to be right. And so, for those reasons, like I say, I'd like to send this back to the Committee on Ordinances and let us look at it. Again, we might come back with exactly the same thing, who knows? But I would like to give it a second look.
I second him.
Sir?
What period of time?
I just want to send it back to the Committee on Ordinances, and then what we would have to do is come back with a motion to this body to bring it forward again. So, it's not technically a table, it's basically just sending it back.
Do we have a motion on the floor to send this ordinance text amendment back to committee? I second it. We had a second from Commissioner Edwards and a motion from Commissioner Rector. Public hearing is over, sir. A discussion and a motion? Is all clear?
Yeah, we have a motion to send it back for review to the Committee on Ordinances. So, Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Staylor?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of 7 to 0.
The text ordinance amendment will be gone back to committee to be reviewed. Do we have any old business? I don't think so. Do we have any, anything coming from ordinance?
Yes, we do. I'd like to get on the agenda for next month's meeting to change the public hearing requirement for exception requests to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Encroachment Act for fences per section 31-415.
Got a motion? You got a second?
Second to motion.
Second to motion, Mr. Taylor. Discussion and motion? Mr. Wine, you call the vote, please. We can take a voice vote on this one. All in favor of bringing the exception request back to us next month after the ordinance committee has reviewed it? All in favor?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, that's...
It's coming to us. It's already been reviewed.
It's coming to us from, it's already been reviewed. It's going to come to y'all in a nice, neat package.
Okay, nice, neat package, with the bow on Tom right there.
Well, I'll talk to Mr. Wine about that, putting a little bow on it for you.
Get some bows, look at the budget.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have, there's one thing I need to mention before I forget. The tech people for the audio, they need us to come a little early next month to be updated on how to use the new voting machines here, okay? And Ms. Cattina will give us how much earlier and set a time for us, okay? Status report, Mr. Wine?
Sure. And I guess I have a, perhaps Vice Chairman Rector can refresh my memory. There was another ordinance discussed at the Committee on Ordinances regarding central business district changes, and it seems like days ago now, but was that...
We did discuss it. I wasn't quite sure we finalized it to the point of where it was ready to come before this body. But if I'm mistaken, I will...
Look at my notes. Okay, that's correct. We needed exhibits. So, once again, that seemed like weeks ago, so I apologize.
It was weeks ago.
Well, it's nice to know, even after four hours, I haven't completely lost it.
Apparently, I have.
Happy for us.
So, are we at an update from last month's City Council meeting?
Yes.
All right. The first item that went before City Council on May 18th was CUP 2021-013. That was a Shady Pine Borrow Pit. City Council moved to table that for 90 days at the request of the applicant. The other item was 315 Boat Street. That was a CUP 2022-004 to grant a conditional use permit to restore a non-conforming residential structure to an extent greater than 50% of its replacement cost. This was approved with the associated conditions. That concludes my report.
Commissioner, got any comments?
The only one I was going to say is I noticed that Commissioner, I mean, that Councilman Goldberg was out there, but we wore him out and he went home.
Okay. If nothing else, the commission, we stand adjourned. Thanks for your input today.